Should health directives from the county of Santa Clara or the Centers for Disease Control change, the city will comply. And I'll call to order this special meeting of the City of Campbell City Council on Wednesday, April twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. This special city council meeting is conducted in person and via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act. The city council meeting is live streamed on channel twenty-six, the city's website and on YouTube. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Here.
Councilmember Lopez?
Here.
Councilwoman Landry?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Present.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Here. Thank you very much. We'll go to public comment, but first for any items not on the agenda. Have we received any requests to speak not on the agenda?
No, only for item one on the agenda.
We'll come back to the items on the agenda a little bit later. So then we'll move to unfinished business. Item one, review Campbell's plan for housing objectives, policies and programs. And our presenter is?
Robbie Sturin, Community Director.
Point of order.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. So how are we going to be conducting this?
So we're gonna, I think we're gonna discuss that right now.
That's a good team for my introduction.
You stole his thunder.
Okay. All right, Robbie Sturin, Community Director. I'll start with introductions of who's with me this evening. You all recognize Senior Planner Stephen Rose. We have our very capable consultant group with us here again to help present. Jeff Bradley is here in the audience behind me. Principal Planner with M Group. And online, we have Principal Planner Brittany Bendix, who's gonna help present some of the presentation from online. So the four of us are here to support you tonight. With that, I was gonna do two things, some broad overview of why we're here tonight, what we're reviewing. And then I do want to stop on the outline for tonight because we have had a slight adjustment in a, in the presentation and a request that's a sort of a subset of what we're talking about tonight, which we'll have an approach to how we present that. But let's go to the next slide first. So I, we'll go ahead and start with this. So, so the first part of the evening, we'll just, we'll present you some background information on, on how we got here, some of the outreach we've done, the background with the past housing element. Our community, again, our community engagement strategy and what we've heard from our community. We'll stop for questions if at that point you have any questions on what you've heard. Then the meat of the evening is going into, the purpose of tonight is the policies and programs that you go into the housing element. And really what we're looking for your feedback is on, on the prioritization of those. There's, there's a lot of different programs Campbell could do. But based on what you know about the community, the need, the demographics, the affordable housing needs, what should be ranked high, the highest priority that we should put our resources in first? And what should be ranked low? And we can talk a little bit more about what that means. So that's the meat of the discussion. We'll present those first. We'll stop. Any public comment, feedback can present on that. Then we'll go back and between the mayor and myself, we have thoughts on how we present that to the council and get feedback on, on grouping of different objectives and policies and programs and how you'd give feedback on the prioritization of those. So that would be the bulk of the evening. One of the policies and programs that has been listed that you've looked at, it's called workforce housing. It's CSCDPA, JPA. So that's a big acronym. So with that one, we have had a request from a stakeholder, a, a business that actually wants to move forward with a project in the near term to, to move forward with that project. It's a little different. Most of the policies, programs we would look at in our housing element or maybe over the next six to nine months, come back, form up the program and you'd adopt it. They have identified a potential real estate opportunity and they would like to move forward a little earlier than that. So we have presented that against a subset of the overall discussion, but we're presenting that a little differently at the end. We can present everything staff knows about the proposal, the pros and cons. And then we'll present some opportunities if, if the council is interested in moving forward with that program in the shorter term. So that's, again, it's part of the overall discussion, but there is, there is an opportunity to move forward with that quicker than anticipated. And that, that's something you could give direction to tonight. So we have put that at the end. And there'll be the stakeholder that will, they'll present five to ten minutes on their proposal and staff has a, an overview of the pros and cons of the program. So that'll be the end of the evening. My understanding, general expectation time wise, hoping, you know, two, two and a half hours to the vocal discussion at least reserved a half an hour at the end for, for that discussion on the CSCPDA discussion. So it's important that's a little, that the public knows, you know, kind of the structure as we go in, because that was a little different anticipation to have that discussion. So with that.
And Rob, let me, let me just clarify. So to clarify, for the, for the objectives, policies and programs, what we're looking for today are priorities of what is high, what is moderate, what is low? What do we want to focus on that's going to come back in greater detail on May ninth?
That is absolutely correct.
So we're not looking to solve those programs today, but to say what's important direction wise. And the CSCDA, no action taken other than the fact that it would come back to us in a regular council meeting in, in May?
In May. If the council sees interest in having this going forward in the short term, that is correct.
And at that time, we can discuss it because some of us may have met with them already and just we can disclose that at that point. I mean, I know there was outreach for that.
Sure.
Okay.
A clarification. You are accepting of questions and conversations about the priorities.
Yes.
Want to end up with ideally a consensus on the priority ranking, but you are, you're not just saying rank them. You want to have a discussion on.
Sure, sure. Because, because right now, the way the, the presentation read, I believe, if I had this right, under the five, the five objectives, there were twenty-four different
Yes.
opportunities. The first one had ten, I think.
Yeah.
And they ranked anywhere from high to moderate to low. And I would envision that there may be some interest i- in, in individuals or majority to say low to moderate, moderate to high, low to high or reverse. So that we know, because we have to come out of here with what are the?
We can have discussion.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. 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 Oh, of course. Yeah. And they, those priorities could change.
Fine.
That was the purpose versus solving the, the, the objective itself.
No.
Yeah. And then the last one was more of a, of a, of an exposure so that if it is indeed coming to us, we have a little head start and it falls under the, under the objectives. So it's suitable as, you know, to, to do it at the end tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And absolutely. I mean, I don't know how to add is you want to make an informed decision. So and a lot of these policies and programs might be a little obtuse. If you need any more information on them, that's our job to help give you as much information so you can prioritize them. Okay, next. So yeah, and I just re staying in the objectives tonight and, and what this means for the process, we do have two meetings. So this is the first, based on your feedback of priorities, we're gonna come back. We reprioritize based on your direction. And the next meeting will probably sharpen a little bit, kind of what each priority and program is and what exactly we would study more. So at least it's, we're focused on what would come out of this. We're gonna do some more stakeholder engagement. We have reached out and it'll be in the slides to a lot of the community, but we do have two more meetings, one with affordable housing developers. We're going back to and to market rate developers to get their feedback on these points before we come back to you. And then we did want to show you, because we are targeted to publish the draft housing element for initial review and to send to HCD in May. Wanted to give you at least a review of the preliminary draft at the next meeting. So you're not surprised when that's put out for public review. The draft language, the outline, and so you're comfortable with what that looks like before it goes out for public review. So that'll be in May. And then as, as we mentioned, at the end of this, we'll have the discussion on the workforce housing. Next. So just stepping back, and I know the council's seen the slide lots of times. We are in a, a fast race to get this all done by the end of the year. You did a very heavy lift in the fall, probably set a pretty fast speed record for this valley for identifying housing opportunity sites within the span of three months. And that was completed to go into the IR in January, and that's undergoing environmental review. Now we're looking at housing policies, programs in tandem. And our objective is to complete that this spring, which reads May, and we'll put the, the, the draft housing element and draft EIRL between May and July. That all comes back, the ER being completed, the, the review by HCD, their comments all comes back in. And late in two thousand twenty-two, that's probably starting in October, we'll bring those comments, the IR back to you and you'll start to review those playing commission council for adoption. So that's the target. Our target overall is to complete all this, send it off to the state and have it certified in, in January of next year. Next. And so just a little bit on our analytical process, we want you to make a very informed decision on all these on these policy and programs. So some of the things staff that went into this, one was of course reviewing our existing housing element and audit of what worked, what didn't work. Programs that need to be updated or maybe programs that were completed. Number two is trying to get a bit more insight into Campbell's unique demographics, our affordability issues, our special needs populations. What, what can we learn from that and focus on our housing needs effort? Again, we did a lot of stakeholder engagement. We had broad community meetings. We met with service providers. We met with the schools and tried to get their feedback on where to put our priorities. And again, that all feeds into what you should prioritize for the programs going into the housing element. Okay. So with that, I'm gonna hand the presentation over to Brittany, who I believe is online and ready, and she will carry the slides going forward. Brittany, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Good evening, council members. I'm Brittany Bendix, Principal Planner with M Group. I will be starting tonight going over the existing housing element. There are currently six goals of the housing element, the existing housing element. These include enhance the quality of existing housing and residential neighborhoods in Campbell. Improve housing affordability. Encourage the production of housing affordable to a variety of household income levels. Provide adequate housing sites through appropriate land use and zoning designations. Reduce the impact of potential governmental constraints and promote an equal opportunity for all residents. As the city has been attempting to move forward with these goals, the city still has not been successful with its RENA requirements. As you can see here, through the period through two thousand twenty-one, the city has only provided thirteen very low units, four low and sixteen moderate. So we do have some recommendations on how to address that. Current staff review and recommendations to include modifying the program language to include detailed implementation in timelines. Retaining existing policy language with some modified policies, bolstering the production of below market rate housing units. Complying with the new requirement by the state of California to include affirmatively furthering for fair housing requirements in the sixth cycle. And then adopting refinements that would support a broader profile of special needs households, further incentivizing ADUs and mitigating displacement. Now I will briefly go over some of the community's demographics. There will be further data, data provided in the draft housing element available for public review as well. Campbell is growing substantially slower than both the region and Santa Clara County, as you can see in the graph on the left, where Campbell's growth from nineteen ninety through two thousand twenty is shown on the yellow line. Additionally, the senior population in Campbell is growing, which is shown on the bar chart on the right. Each of the age brackets show growth over the period from two thousand to two thousand twenty, while the age groups younger than fifty-five years old on the left have shown somewhat inconsistent patterns during this time period. The population of individuals aged fifty-five years or more has continued to increase. You see my screen? It went blank for a minute. Yes? Okay, great.
Yes.
Another key demographic observation is that there is a housing mismatch. These two bar charts show the number of owners in blue and renters in green. The bar chart on the left indicates the number of households by size, one, two, three, four or four, uh, four or more than five residents per household. The bar chart on the right indicates the number of housing units by bedroom size, shown here as studios, one, two, three and four or more bedrooms. When we say that there is a housing mismatch, we're indicating that the housing that is available doesn't match the household needs. So for example, as you can see in the bar chart on the left, Campbell tends to have smaller households of two or fewer residents. However, the bar chart on the right indicates a greater proportion of the housing stock or three bedroom ownership units. This is an example of misalignment that contributes to affordable affordability issues. We've also looked at demographics for specific populations. The bar chart on the left indicates the number of female headed households with and without children. The bars in blue are households above the poverty level and the bars in green are below the poverty level. So this indicates that Campbell does have a portion of female headed households with children that are below the poverty line. The bar chart on the right shows the distribution of Campbell's senior population across three different income levels. The blue bar indicates seniors who are owners and the green bars indicate seniors who are renters. This data reveals that Campbell has a higher number of low income seniors that are renting. Now I will share some of the community engagement efforts our team has completed up to this point, as well as some of the feedback we've received. Our engagement over policies and programs for the housing element so far has included a community meeting that we held on March twenty-fourth. This was both in person and virtual. We've also held three focus group meetings, one with service providers, another with local ministries and one, of course, with the school district. These efforts have completed, have complemented a community survey that was initiated last fall and wrapped up earlier this month. Here is an example of some of the feedback we received at the meeting on March twenty-fourth. At that meeting, we asked a number of questions such as what housing issue is most important to you? Participants could then enter phrases or words from their computers or mobile devices, and in real time, the words appeared in this word cloud for the group to see. You can see some general themes emerge here, affordability, housing for specific groups like seniors and families, as well as concerns stemming from recent state legislation like SB nine, SB ten and SB thirty-five. Beyond the word cloud example, we've also had more specific comments. Highlights of these comments included desire to see the city emphasize below market rate units and prioritize projects with a hundred percent affordability, smaller units, ADUs or locations near transit. We also heard a desire to promote housing with onsite care facilities that serve a number of populations, such as individuals who are unhoused or precariously housed, persons with disabilities or seniors. Additional comments also related to maintaining existing apartments without raising rents. Interest in resilient policies that support renewable energy efforts or transit oriented development. Support for informing seniors on how to downsize and connecting the senior population with housing and social needs. Interest in supportive housing for those on fixed incomes that goes beyond medical services, such as programs that focus on healthy food, childcare and adult education. And a desire to see rapid rehousing programs, especially for female headed households. So at this point, we want to pause and ask the council if there are any questions on this information so far.
Thank you. So we're not going to open to the public yet, but are there, when you're leaning forwards. And get ready to figure you my question. And then we'll go down that, we'll go down the road.
So, thank you. I, I appreciate the information and the demographics. And this is a background. I appreciate the effort to get here. What, um, I'm having difficulty understanding the value of and how it's going to be utilized, value of utilized. And there's a discussion about seniors and needing senior housing and that seniors are in bad shape. It almost reads and the seniors are in half three bedroom or two bedroom houses and they only need a one bedroom house. It reads as if we're trying to kick seniors out of their own homes. So I just want to make sure, I, I don't think that's the intent, but the way it's presented. You know, you need senior housing. Well, seniors already have housing. So, you know, and then, then this slide, she just said how to help them downsize. But we don't necessarily want to force people to downsize. I'm trying, I'm trying to make sure that we're communicating so that we don't move forward with an assumption.
The, the only question, the only comment I'll have is I, I think that came from community comments, the request for assistance on downsizing. So again, we were just summarizing some of the feedback we heard from the community, but there's no stated policy or programs or actions that we've directly identified out of that to, to that point.
Okay. Um, I'm not sure that's the case, but to me that I, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the intent here because I, I found it odd. And then is also well, this is further on in the material. All right. I'll wait till you present that information then. Now let me just check one more thing if I may. So so there's a lot of information in the staff report that hasn't just, wasn't just presented. So I've got some questions on that.
So we're gonna break, we're gonna break as it's presented. So we'll
So is, okay, so.
We're, we're kind of breaking at this point to, to this information and see if there's some questions. So you may want to hold, you may want to hold.
I'll hold, but make sure that. I'll hold, but make sure that.
And, and to answer your, your first question, if, if there, for example, if there's a program that promotes. Senior housing that you think is inappropriate, when we're talking priorities, that would be the discussion you're talking about off of being a low priority or, or not a priority for the council. So we'll have that discussion.
Okay, um, what I'm trying to understand from staff. There's, there's a chart in here that says the population trends, um, are, are low here in Campbell. But at the same time. Campbell has, uh, while you're looking at the graph, I mean, Campbell has not turned down housing projects. We have not stopped anything. So I think it's important that. Again, we don't make any assumptions. About why we are where we are.
I guess I'll say, if you feel there were assumptions, I don't know there were, to get to the prioritization, then, then that's where our discussion will be to.
Okay.
I think we may be ahead of, I think, I, I don't understand, but I think we may be ahead of.
Okay.
But let's see, let's go to this point and we'll come back. Councilmember Lopez, questions? No questions? Okay, so let's, let's continue. You know, questions?
All right, so the next section of our presentation is going over the proposed objectives, policies, and programs. There are currently five objectives that frame twenty-six policies and programs for the housing element. I will be covering each objective with a highlight of the related policies and programs. That will also include the feedback we received from the planning commission at their meeting on April twelfth. In terms of the flow of this part of the presentation, this will take some time, so as I go through it, I'd encourage listeners to track the number of the objective we're discussing. Uh, which should be noted at the bottom of the slide, highlighted in orange, as well as the letter of the policy or program. Once I get through all five objectives, we will then, as has already been mentioned, open this up for public comment. So that the public has the benefit of commenting on the collection of policies and programs. After public comment, we will then provide summary slides that will aid us in the council's discussion. Also, please note that if there is any program or policy that you're not seeing on the list, but would like to add, uh, please let us know that during the comment period. So with that said, there are, the five objectives are, one, to improve housing affordability in Campbell. Two, to preserve existing housing and affordability and affordable housing stock. Three, to remove government constraints to housing. Four, to provide resilient housing policies. And five, to address affirmatively furthering fair housing and special needs groups. We've also, uh, indicated prioritization for each of these programs and policies. At this point, the prioritization is more time-based in terms of how quickly implementation can occur. High priority would take roughly one to two years to complete. Medium priority would span three to five years, and low priority would take the duration of the housing cycle. The first objective is to improve housing affordability in Campbell. This objective happens to have the most policies and programs, so just a heads up that this spans three slides. The first policy is to modify Campbell's inclusionary housing ordinance, which staff prioritized as high priority. This could result in modifications to the city's current fifteen percent below-market-rate inclusionary requirement. As a means to either incentivize affordable units and/or modify the in-lu fee schedule. Either process would require additional analysis and a nexus study. Staff's recommendation is that the inclusionary requirement should be modified to require an even split of units at low income and moderate income levels. And to provide a scalable in-lu fee payment. The planning commission provided general support for this effort, however, they indicated that the current in-lu fee may be too low. And that the ten-unit threshold, which triggers the inclusionary program, should be lowered. Under B, another program would be to establish affordable housing impact fees that are applicable to non-residential development. We frequently refer to this as linkage fees between jobs and housing. This would similarly require additional analysis and a nexus study. Staff's recommendation is that this is a medium priority, beginning with an initial comparative analysis of linkage fees in neighboring jurisdictions. The planning commission indicated a hesitancy to apply linkage fees as they were concerned it would discourage commercial development and job growth in Campbell. Item C refers to the establishment of an affordable housing overlay zone. This could be done in combination with other programs, but it would ultimately result in incentives and development standards to incentivize affordable housing through zoning of identified geographic areas. Staff recommends that this is a high priority and also encouraged a transfer of development rights program to complement this effort. The planning commission was in support of this recommendation. Moving along, policy D would regulate housing unit size as a means to increase affordability. Staff recommended this as a high priority item and that the city evaluate a maximum average unit size as a means to preserve the seventy-five-foot height limit in Campbell. Offering exceptions for units that house special need, needs populations. This recommendation received planning commission support with the request that the policy be capable of responding to shifts in market demands. Program E refers to the use of city-owned land for affordable housing. This effort is currently underway as part of this profit, process, so it's noted here as a high priority. The planning commission did not discuss this item. Program F includes ADU ordinance updates. Staff recommends this as a low priority, given that approximately thirty percent of existing ADUs are rented at affordable levels. However, the planning commission had a mixed response. The commission was in general agreement relative to the prioritization of ADUs. But some commissioners raised concerns that deed restrictions that limit the affordability on ADUs. Could become a disincentive to ADU construction. Tearing off of this consideration, program G would establish pre-approved ADU plan sets. Staff recommended this as a medium priority, given that there is already a county-wide effort to achieve this. The planning commission supported staff's recommendation and requested that any permit, any permit-ready plans also include alternatives for ADA accessible units. These are the final three considerations under our first objective. Program H, uh, would provide continu-, uh, would provide certainty for housing developers. By allows, allowing appropriate waivers for affordable housing developments. Staff recommended this as a high priority and encouraged this effort be done in tandem with the affordable housing overlay zone. And the development of objective development standards. The planning commission supported this recommendation and suggested further that waivers should be cross, uh, process-focused, not fee-focused. Program I, developing objective development standards is already in process in response to a number of state laws. But also supplement certain housing programs as previously noted. The planning commission is supportive of this ongoing effort. And finally, program J, to develop a missing middle housing ordinance. Staff recommended this program as a medium priority, noting it would follow adoption of objective design standards and would enable, would enable the city to respond directly to SB ten. By identifying specific sites for urban infill. The planning commission supported this recommendation, noting that zoning and development standards should be revisited so that they do not cause undue constraints on SB ten site development. Moving onwards now to objective two, to preserve existing housing and affordable housing stock. Policy A involves adoption of a rent control ordinance. Such a program could cap yearly rent increases and go beyond state regulations. Staff identified this as a low priority and recommended that an ordinance focus on protecting month-to-month tenants as, uh. As well as educating tenants. The planning commission does not support this policy and indicated they were, they were not in favor of going beyond current state law. Policy B focuses on the preservation of mobile home parks. Staff identified this as a low priority, given that current land use regulations only allow mobile home parks at their existing density. And that such a policy could be of limited utility. The planning commission did not discuss this item. Policy C relates to the development of a short-term vacation rental ordinance. This could allow for vacation rentals under thirty days in Campbell, but would require outreach to balance the community's housing stability with the benefits of the program to the city's general fund. Staff recommended this as a low priority as allowing short-term vacation rentals could diminish the existing housing stock. And would need evaluation to balance. The planning commission supported staff's recommendation. Program D was, would result in a housing rehabilitation loan, loan program. This could provide eligible households with financing assistance for qualifying home repairs that prolongs the lifespan of existing housing. Staff recommends this as a low priority. Updating the city's existing policy to provide more specific direction beyond currently redirecting individuals to rebuild, rebuilding together Silicon Valley. The planning commission supported this effort. And program E relates to participation in a workforce housing program with the California statewide community, communities development authority. There will be a specific presentation, as noted previously on this program later this evening, with a specific opportunity for public comment as well. Staff's recommendation to the planning commission on this item was to identify this as a medium priority and to adopt an ordinance to authorize opportunity housing within Campbell. The planning commission believes this should be a high priority. However, there are concerns that the tax exemption for participating properties would undercut city revenue. Objective three is to remove government constraints. This includes program A, which is modifying existing parking standards. Staff identified this as a high priority and recommended reducing parking standards for affordable projects and projects near transit. The planning commission supported the recommended, uh, recommendation, but added a request to modify requirements to unbundle parking and to include bicycle parking. They also requested, or they also suggested considering a study on the utilization of existing parking lots. And then facilitate housing development on such underutilized lots with lower parking requirements as well. Policy B would improve permit streamlining. Staff recommended this as a low priority, given the extent of state streamlining programs currently available. The planning commission was supportive of this recommendation, however, they requested staff also track policy outcomes. Policy C provides development impact fee adjustments for affordable housing projects. Staff recommended this as a low priority, as the only impact fee applicable to affordable housing currently is for public parks. Waving of this fee should apply only to a hundred percent affordability projects or units at very low income levels. The planning commission supported this recommendation. Objective four relates to resilient housing policies. Policy A would consider citing requirements for development projects. Staff recommended this as a low priority, given that this could be added into the current efforts for development objective, uh, for the development of objective design standards. And that it would supplement existing Cal Green requirements and consistent, uh, consistency with the climate action plan efforts. The planning commission requested this be a higher priority and be crafted to incentivize developers to use green building standards when otherwise not required. And to pursue more conservation me- measures. Policy B would encourage resilient design practices such as greater energy efficiency. Similar to policy A, staff recommended this as a low priority, citing existing and ongoing efforts. However, the planning commission requested this policy elevate to a medium priority and encourage use of heat pumps. Uh, in addition to other measures. The commission also stressed care and defining requirements versus encouraged measures. Uh, objective five is to affirmatively further fair housing. Policy A would focus on the fulfillment of housing needs for special needs populations and workforce housing. Staff recommends this as a high priority with the focus on expanding and supporting existing programs, as well as identifying new needs. The planning commission agreed with the high prioritization of this effort and suggested further room, further refinements, including. Include, uh, including pre-approved ADU plans for people with disabilities. Setting a goal of an equal number of shelter beds is people experiencing homelessness. Including, and including a density bonus program for developers that serve special needs populations. Policy B would include establishing renter protections. Staff identified this as a low priority, given the city's existing contract with Project Sentinel. However, they suggested policy adoption could focus on aligning with identified housing challenges. The planning commission did not discuss this specific item. Program C would provide ADU incentives for special needs populations. Staff does not recommend this program, given challenges with implementation and compliance. The planning commission did not discuss this program, however, as noted previously, the planning commission had indicate, has indicated support. For programs and policies that result in the production of ADA accessible ADUs. Policy D relates to providing greater outreach and education for public regarding fair housing laws. Staff identified this as a low priority, given the city's existing contract with Project Sentinel. However, they suggested identifying specific guidance on best methods and target audiences. The planning commission supports this effort and provided the following suggest, suggestions. Consider partnering with religious facilities and workplaces for outreach. Provide, uh, provide advocacy and assistance on rental disputes. Provide annual reporting on services and successes to track effectiveness and continue this dialogue. Program E would provide equity training to a variety of individuals in an effort to facilitate greater diversity and include, inclusion and structural practices. Including policymaking and community events. Staff recommended this as a medium priority with special attention dedicated to the identification of specific guidance for methods and audiences. The planning commission did not discuss this item. Finally, policy S relates to the provision of multilingual information on housing programs. Staff identified this as a medium priority with the effort aimed to translate key housing program materials and hand, handouts into Spanish. And consider other languages as appropriate. The planning commission supports this effort. Finally, the commission also provided two overarching comments. The first, the, the commission encouraged the city to reevaluate the impact of its seventy-five-foot height limit on the production of affordable housing. Additionally, the commission expressed a concern that categorizing policies and programs as low priorities would not lead to action. At this point, this concludes my overview of the objectives, policies, and programs. And at this time, I'll turn it back over to the city to facilitate public comment and questions.
Thank you, Brittany. So at this point, you want to stop for public comment at this point, this, so we're gonna go to public comment, and that will start with people in the chamber and then go. Um, online and, I don't, we have people online that want to speak.
Yes, I have two individuals signed up to speak, and there are hands being raised, so if we could just remind those online.
We could do that. Do we have any cards for inside the chamber? Oh, certainly. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll cover the, we'll cover the people here, and then we'll go online, and we'll make sure we didn't miss anybody here. So let's start with Jim Sullivan. Jimmy, you'll have two minutes. Please go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I was here at the planning commission hearing last week, and, and I think that some of my comments had been, uh, already put into the staff report. I just wanted to touch on two things. Objective number one, uh. I was a proponent for the in-lu fees, and I realize that they're extremely low right now, both developer impact fees, but the, the potential of having. For, instead of just providing the number of units, I've found particularly when, when single-family detached homes are being done, or potentially even townhomes. There's such a gap between low or moderate prices and what the market rate price is. That a lot of money could be collected from a developer, and I think that that money can be utilized with nonprofits to benefit. Much more than what would be benefited, say, like with a ten-unit single-family detached home, uh, project, right, one-point-five units. The other thing about in-lu fees that I like is I think right now it's a limit of ten. Units, uh, or more, you know, kind of triggered the fee. I know that staff was, was looking at taking that down to seven. Because of course fifteen percent of seven is one unit. But if somebody does a three-unit subdivision, a four-unit subdivision, and they're not providing any units, they should pay a fee. And it all goes into a pot that, again, the city of Campbell can use to help out, um. You know, with, with nonprofits or, or, you know, provide, you know, that to, to those less fortunate. The other one really quickly is objective number three, I think, reduce government can, uh, restraints. I'm all in favor of that. I love to hear that. And particularly on number A, the modifying of part, parking standards, uh, you know, I, I know that it's a high priority right now on staff's list, list, and I hope that the council, uh, continues in that vein. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Next speaker, I have Gina, Gina Zari. Come on up, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, council, uh, mayor and council members. Gina Zari, Santa Clara County Association of Realtors. Just wanted to, um, first of all, thank you, um. Tenant protections, um, and I know you, you know this well, but, um, tenant protections really. Serve to force local mompops out of the market. And I, I know that, um, it has a low priority. I appreciate that. And I I know that it has a low priority. I appreciate that it has a low priority. But I just want to express how how real it is that 70% of your affordable housing approximately. Is provided by mom and pop housing providers. And when you layer in rent control or. Or tenant protections that that sound well intentioned. What that they end up doing is forcing small mom and pops out of the market. Those mom and pops who know their tenants, love their tenants, drive their tenants 45 minutes to go pick up their car. Not that I'm sending a specific example or anything, but but these these. Small mom popping housing providers that care and and and, you know, keep rents low. Get forced out of the market when you pile on any type of mandate. They have to do translation. They have to hire attorneys and and they're just not equipped. So that's my first ask is please consider. Being really careful about mandates and requirements on small mom and pop housing providers, particularly rent control. We already have 1482 is is your staff, so wisely mentioned, and I I think that's sufficient. The other is impact fees. Impact fees artificially increase the cost of housing. As does inclusionary zoning, of course, but impact fees artificially. Raise the cost of housing. Anyone who has a 20 year old or 25 year old. Knows how important it is to try to create more affordable housing for young families who are just starting out in their lives. And I just I ask you to be cautious when it comes to housing impact fees. Because every additional cost that we layer on affects the cost of housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other cards in house? Anybody else in the chamber wish to speak? Seeing none?
That was the last card.
Okay. So. I'm looking for hands online. You said, oh, I see. I see one, I think. Is that I see one hand. Is that right?
Uh, yes, one hand raised and I have two to sign up to speak in advance. Would you like to take those two? Before we take the hands.
Have to or okay, please, yes.
Um, Miss Amy Cody.
Amy, are you there?
Actually, this is a nilba bar.
Okay.
And then just one moment, we'll call your name in just one second.
Hi, I am here.
Hi, Amy. Go go ahead, please. You have two minutes. Amy, you're muted. Can we unmute her? Or is that from her side?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, now we hear you. Thank you.
Oh, good. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Resnickoff and council members. I'm Amy Cody, president of the Moreland West Neighborhood Association. Our neighborhood is bounded by Hamilton Avenue, Campbell Avenue and San Tomas Aquino Road. We're located partly in San Jose and partly in Campbell. We'd like to thank everyone working to update Campbell's housing element and appreciate the chance to participate in community meetings. On this topic. We also wanted to take the opportunity to remind council and staff that the El Paso and Costco projects in San Jose. And Saratoga's dense housing plans along the border will impact Campbell and need to be planned for in Campbell's general plan update. So those are my comments. Generally for the. Housing update, but also for the general plan update. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Who we have next? And Neil, can you hear us?
Uh, yeah, I can.
There you are. Go ahead. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Another bar with the California Department Association. I I do appreciate the position of both the planning commission. And of staff to maintain rent control at a low priority. I believe AB 1482 did a. Did the job of ensuring the renters have protection and that we should really be focusing on. And as a as a community to kind of move ourselves out of this pandemic inflicted. Pain that has been caused a lot of owners and tenants. I think we we as the association are focused on helping both tenants owners get their rents paid. And and ensuring also those that are not. Uh, applicable to the federal ERAP programs also get. Access to some benefits as well. We we sponsor AB 847. Which does that. And so again, we feel that AB 142 generally cover that subject and. Are once again appreciative of the positions of both staff and the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Do we have anybody else wish to speak? I don't see a hand.
No, that was the last hand and no other speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. So nobody here or nobody else in the chamber? We got it right? Okay, let's close the public hearing. And bring it back. At this point, Rob, for council discussion or you have another any other comments, me?
No, that's it. And we can present slides that will help facilitate council discussion on the policies if you're ready.
Okay, so let's go to the book. So I thought Stephen, was there something else? I I wasn't sure you're reaching for it. I wasn't sure.
No, I was just indicating that we do have summary slides of each of these goals. Ranking the high, medium and low priorities in each, just to make it easy to go through each discussion.
Okay, so let's go through here and we'll bring it up. And if we have to bring up this particular objectives, maybe you can put them up as we're talking about whatever objective it is. Put up the put up that objective. Do you want to start?
So I'll just up my point I was trying to clarify is there's a lot of data. That's been put together and data is great and it's interesting to read, but what I was uncomfortable about. Was how the data is going to inform these policies. I didn't see the interconnection between the data. And the policies and an example is is a statement in here seniors. Although seniors who are homeowners generally make greater than 100% of the area medium income. The majority of seniors who are renting make less than 50% of the area income. I think that's a valuable data. But I would like to to see more connection to how that ties in to what's being presented as solutions. That that's the the juxtaposition I was trying to get to. So with that in mind, I'll go to the. First issue here. And. Let's see.
Before you start, I just want to note, so on the screen, we have the first objective. It's approved housing affordability in Campbell. We listed all. Think 10 priorities. We've grouped them by high, medium, low, that's staff recommendation and and we'll get feedback if you think that's correct. And then if you were tracing along, as Brittany said, the. The the letters might be out of order because we have presented them in a different order, but on this screen, again, they're. Are grouped from high to low, just to allow for ease of different grouping. So again, this is the first objective and these are all the potential policies and programs.
My my guess is that we'll see how it goes. I guess because Brittany presented this by objective, that that's how my notes are kind of through objective. So we'll probably. Wind up doing it that way, my guess, but.
Okay, so. One of my overarching comments on all of them, but I'll start with it here. Improving the housing affordability. I think we need to be sure and understand how all of these affordable units are going to be managed, how they're going to be tracked. What are the implications? Of how these, I mean, we're talking 1,500 houses or or units or more. And does that mean that the city is going to have to pick up that management? So I I would like to see something that helps cover what that. Plans means. Then there's another comment, additional incentives for development units. I don't find a good definition and so I may be asking for too much detail. But the statements are additional information for development units to extremely low, low. To accommodate. So what do you really mean by incentives? Because sometimes. You have unintended consequences. So I'm having difficulty. And I'm just pointing out that I see that gap. We it says the next thing is provide more specific requirements for exact percentage of units that should be provided. We currently, I believe, have a policy which is to distribute. Our the units in a project proportionate to arena numbers for low, 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 low and so forth. So one is I would like to confirm that that is what we're doing. And that this is re continuing that policy. And I would like to offer, and this may be not doable, is because we're having so much of a challenge. On the low, low and low that there might be a part two of the policy. Which has to do with. If a project has more than. I don't, I'm just saying this out loud as a thought. If you have more than 50 units. Then you have to do all of your units at low, low or 50%. In other words, you change the percentage of what you have to do in order to help build up our low, low and low. I was looking for something that would help with that. And we were previously told the next one is the 10 units. We were previously told that our 15% inclusionary could not legally go below 10. And I just would ask that we are absolutely sure that that's the case. Because we asked to lower it years ago and we were told we couldn't. So I just want to make sure. I don't know what the right number is for seven or not. I don't know that. And says staff would recommend carrying the percentage of restricted units of income. 50%, I think that I said enough there. I'm fine with that being a high priority. Establishing affordable housing impact fee. I'm actually fine with this and I'm looking at this somewhat differently. It's my understanding that according to HCD, we already have more jobs than we have housing. The priority is to provide housing. So I do not think putting in an impact fee on. Non residential projects is going to hurt us. I think it's an additional source of income, which I think is really what we need to do. We have to find sources of income. McCammon's analysis is like cheese, whatever. The affordable housing overlay zone. There's not enough information here for me. There's appear to be a lot of risk with unintended consequences. You're talking about swapping. How did you use it? You used. Development rights. One of the things that is very critical. And and again, this may be too much detail at this point, but I'll put it as a thought that if you have. 40 units an acre and you can do 50%. You're going to get 60 units an acre. And if you take a neighbor's parcel. And they can do 40 and then 60, you can get 120 units in an acre. So that to me is an unintended consequence. So. I don't object to affordable housing overlay zone, but I think one has to be very thoughtful. About how that is done. And I would say. Yes, staff has that. As a high priority. I'm fine with it being a high priority, but I think it's a great risk and we just need to know more. Regulation of housing unit size. I think that's very, very important. I think it's a challenge because you're going to need, and it says here, this is a little bit different than we've talked about before. As an example, the city of Burlingame uses an average unit size of 1,250 square feet for the downtown area. So would we do it for downtown versus near transit centers? So I think there needs to be a little clarity on how this would be applied. I like this, I think, because it gets us away from units per acre, which I think is a constraint, if that's the intent of this. I'm not totally clear. If that's the intent. And staff has that as a high priority. I. Am not in favor of making any adjustment to the city's 75 foot height limit. It was voter approved. We already know that state law supersedes that. I do not think we should do anything to change that. I think we're already forced to do that. And there's too much unintended consequences. So I would not put that. If I'm reading that correctly, I would not put that as a high priority. Sorry, my page skipped. Where are we on? Sorry, my page skipped. Uh, housing unit size. Use of city owned land use, I think is the next one E. It's it's in process. I have doubts that it's realistic. But it's in process. ADU ordinance update. It says units are deemed restricted to be affordable for very low and low and moderate income. I was in favor of that when it first came about and we were told at the time that we could not legally do that. So if you can now legally do it, that's fine, but I know explicitly we were told we could not. So I'm fine if we can. Again, the same thing comes about is how are we going to manage all of this? Who's going to be responsible for checking the qualifications and consistency? Challenges ADU units is solely reliant on individual owners decide to develop ADU. So that's fine. It's the way it is now. People can do it or not. I actually. I would say that was a medium, not a low priority. I would put that as a potential because we were looking for. I believe that we're looking through these policies to go back onto the land use map. That will then tell us what the capacity of the land use maps are going to be. It's so if you're saying that we can have. 50 places with certified affordable units, they would count in our housing element. So to me, I think this is a very good policy to consider. And I think it would bring value. And I don't think it's a discouragement for people to do that. The pre-approved ADU plans, I think, is as the phrase goes, a slam dunk. I don't know whether we could use the San Jose plans, use the other things that you're recommending with a planning collaborative. All of that may be very possible and doable. So I'm supportive of that. I would go for my. A moderate priority on that. Providing H is providing certainty for housing developers to allow appropriate waivers for the development. I honestly didn't understand what you were saying on this one at all. So H, providing certainty for housing developers by allowing appropriate waivers from development regulations or fees. For affordable housing development. I I I did not, I honestly didn't understand this one.
We could speak to it if you like.
Please.
Oh, sure. So I'll I'll start and and Stephen might have some more information. I think this was because our intent is to have more affordable housing development. If an affordable housing development project came in, we would specify they'd get certain waivers and provisions out the gate. So there'd be a reduction in fees, a potential reduction in impact fees, a streamlined process. And other things that would be offered upfront. Now, the the council knows per state density bonus law and other provision state law, usually you can get those anyways. But when you. Editor's things have used those just to declare upfront that they are open to give those without question as an incentive. And you can often provide some waivers. That may go above and beyond state law.
So my comment here is I think I'd be cautious on the unintended risks that are involved in these. I think we need, you would really be have to give some pretty good examples to show how you would control the risk of these. And also you want to be thoughtful on on cost recovery for. The. Reduction in fees, if you're talking the the permit application fees versus impact fees or something like that. You want to define what the quote unquote fee you're referring to, because we have to do cost recovery. And there is state law. So. I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to give away the ship before it was ready to sail. And I would offer that some of this rather than doing this, you could cover it in the pre-application process. Our current pre-application process may no longer be valid. Because the intent was for a developer to come in before they're investing a lot of money. To provide three different concepts that get feedback for them. But now because we have. Very little input right now and also because. The laws are such that there's not a lot you can comment on other than the objective standards when they exist. That. You might be able to take care of this through a pre-application process. I just, I don't, I I'm uncomfortable with the implication that you would give it all away upfront. Uh, let's see. Uh, we'll talk about it doing in tandem with the AHOZ. And the objective standards, because I agree they all tie together. And then we're doing I develop objective standards. We know we're already doing that. And I do appreciate that. I I can come back to this subjective standards one at the end rather than take time now because I'd like to pick up where the conversation left from last night. The other thing, there's a comment in the statistics about the area having. Or in the newspaper today, actually, I think also there's our area has the highest salaries. And. It's a competitive market for tenants more than it is supply and demand. And the reason I'm saying that is I have, I don't see anything in here. That helps with actual affordability for people who earn 30, 40, $50,000. people who earn thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars a year. If we still use the federal standards of, what is it, adjusted median income, you're talking a hundred and forty thousand dollars for a family of four. And that's somebody who's earning a lot of money, relatively speaking. What we want to do is provide affordable housing for someone who's earning forty, fifty, or sixty thousand dollars. So I don't see anything in this discussion yet on how we can support. I mean, that the low-low, and that's what I was trying to get at before, is is there, when you talk about overlay districts and you talk about um inclusionary and different things, can we do something with the the percentage of low-low numbers and how we spread it across the group? I know that the Rena numbers this year specifically changed the formula to identify the need for the low-low and low. But we may want to take a look at that as well. So I'm just looking for something that actually does do that. Let's see. Under development. What's that one? That's objective standards. J is the missing middle ordinance. Uh, there was a lot of discussion in the news just today about SB ten. I will offer the example um in the staff report about Santa Mas. Um, I think we have to be careful, and I didn't support it in our earlier discussions, converting retail and and the Santa Mas area to housing makes it um retail and walkability's uh qualities much less. That you need to have a diversity of of uh walkability retail. And by converting those, um I don't think that that's going to um work well. So I would make that a low, not a moderate. Okay.
Councilwoman Lopez?
Great, thank you. Um, before I start, I just have one clarificate, clarifying question from staff. Um, items to E workforce housing uh at uh a form of which we might be talking about more tonight, and item five A uh, which I, in in my reading also includes workforce housing. How are you differentiating between the two, or is there actually overlap between those? And and the reason I ask is because they have different levels of um priority that they are given. No, I'm I'm jumping with two and five.
Let's stick to what we're going to reach.
We're only going, okay. Okay.
Yeah, one happens to be the largest ones. We're gonna do that and then we'll come back.
I just said, okay.
We can be ready with an answer, but we we'll wait till the next.
Let's, yeah, let's wait.
That wasn't clear, sorry.
No, no, no problem. Um. And and then, just so I know which way the discussion is going to go, do we if we have new ideas or new ideas that were brought up, it will that be at the end?
I I think if they fall under the the objective, it makes sense probably to bring them up at that point. But we can also, we can also do it at the end. We're good. I mean, we're just, we're going to try to stop at eight thirty or so.
Okay, that, yeah, no, that that's okay. I can be efficient. Um, um, so so no problem. Like, yeah, I can reconfigure a little. Um, so what what I'm going to focus on first is areas of disagreement with the staff recommendations for for clarity. Um, and and then I'll go back and highlight particular, so so anything I don't touch on there, you're going to see my agree with the staff recommendation. Then I'll go back and and touch on areas of of agreement where it's like plus-plus, you know, doubling down on 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 that party. So, okay, sticking with one. Um, one B linkage fees. Um, I would move this to low priority. I I do have a concern um about unintentional consequences and harming commercial development there. And um one J, uh, developing missing middle housing, um, that for me would move to high priority. And and I'll I'll share a a couple of overarching principles and I'll I'll just say this once, but ju- just guiding my my feedback tonight. Um, one, I'm looking for our biggest bang for our buck. So what what's going to be most impactful in terms for for the least amount of staff resources? Uh, relatively easier implementation and synergy with with maybe areas that they were looking at already. So that's just my uh o- overarching thing. And then um the the other thing is that any for for tonight, I'm looking at this in terms of what areas do we explore and have staff come back to us with more ideas? Not committing to this particular version form of the policy tonight. So so that ju- just a uh pre uh preface my my feedback. So one B and and one J, those are my areas of disagreement. And and then just one of size, uh, one C. Um, I I agree with this as a a high priority, the the affordable housing overlay. And I agree, it has to be done right. There's examples of of both. Um, I'd I'd want to look to some of the really interesting work that that's being done in in Berkeley, where they're they're trying some some ideas there. Um, and and potentially, uh, you know, getting in touch to to see how implementation of that has has gone. Um, but but that, I think, has the ability to be a a high impact area. Um, I I agree, uh, one D, um, uh, with that as a a high priority. Um, and uh, one E, city, uh, city-owned land. Um, that that we're looking at that, that that for me, I tha- that is in in contrast, something that is is going to take more staff time and exploration of how that would work, because we we've never quite tried it um in in some of the ways that we're thinking it. But but I I I think that's a good thing um to to bring out some of tho- those new ideas. One G, uh, I think this is agreement with what council member Given said um about the ADU pre-check plans. Um, I I I agree, I think what was a char- characterization, it seemed like a slam dunk, seems like relatively easy, relatively good bang for our buck, and in terms of something I that could help, and and just making sure we're following best practices. And and again, try and learn from um the 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 pros and cons of um what's come out of San Jose, but that seems to be uh in some ways pretty much down to the science where applicants know what they expect, they know what the process will look like. Um, so that'd be great to to try to um to to learn from that. So those are my major things. And then just that this was my question. My potentially one thing that I would add for for this objective, although it could apply to others, is I also want to look at the um getting really strategic um around how we interface with the legislature. Um, and and I I I say that for for a couple of reasons. With with this objective, with improving housing affordability, uh, for example, there's um a state social housing bill with with lots of poor right now being carried by Assemblymember Alex Lee that may be more impactful on on some of these uh uh, the goals toward achieving this objective than what we can do, anything that we could do on our own as as a city, just because we have certain limitations. So it it may be that the relatively lower impact of a finger-out strategy for engagement on a bill like that um allows us to do much more that that we wouldn't be able to otherwise. Um, if if that that passes. Um, and and I just name that as one, one example. Um, that there may be other uh other things. And and this is where the synergy comes in, because I think we're getting there. Um, and and um really learning best practices with our legislative subcommittee, and we're having discussions around how to get more strategic with that. So um, I I think that's in line, and I think increasingly as more housing, as as we saw, we'll probably see a little bit of a reprieve this year, but probably a another way of housing laws uh next year. Um, more than housing policy is going to come out of Sacramento for for better or worse, and figure out how we interface with that. I I think uh bodies like the legislative subcommittee, there may be other ways of of engaging. Um, how do we use staff time on that? Um, will will be a bigger part, I think, of successfully achieving our housing goals. So uh, look at that and looking at, you know, how do we have potentially more of an advocacy strategy on areas that that clearly are aligned uh with our goals. Um, and then finally looking, this goes back to the uh SB ten example that I would move to high priority. Figuring out how implementation of of new or or uh recently passed legislation can allow us to to achieve our goals. So I I think just increasingly for cities that um are going to be successful in meeting the these targets that uh figuring out how to work where work with or how to interface with the legislature will will be a bigger piece of that. So also up there for now for for the first uh o- objective, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, thank you. Um, a lot of work, you guys. I appreciate it. Um, so I'm going to start by asking your question about E. What does it mean that city-owned land is in process?
As far as our housing element update, we, as far as our housing operating site analysis, we identified two properties, that being the city corporation yard and the First Street parking garage for further study and analysis as a potential housing site.
Okay, so I'm going to start with that one. I think that needs to be a low priority. Those two parcels are extremely complicated. There's parking, sharing, uh, in whatever was done with that parking structure, a lot of businesses. Um, there was agreements had made and reasons for numbers of parking and how businesses got their business with sharing this structure. Um, sorting that out legally and technically to me is a long-term thing, and I don't see these two properties being done in eight years. The courtyard to me is a very big problem, because where are you going to move it to? And the cost of land to buy to move it and fuel tanks and technical equipment and maintenance yards and vehicle this and the infrastructure that's associated with that. And I did not support these before, and I just think of the those two, because those are the only two we've identified, are the two most complicated uh public uh properties. Uh, so I wouldn't, I would make that low or take it off the list completely for the next eight years. Let's see, so under D, regulation of housing unit sizes to increase affordability. One of the things that I haven't heard us talk about at all so far, and maybe I missed it, but I've had developers come forward to me looking at where you have a shared common area of like, as I would say, for like a dorm where you have kitchen, living room, shared areas, but then you have bedrooms off of that shared area. And that, to me, would make a bill a very low income and more affordable. And then also for um disabled people or people of special needs. Uh, they need extra services or like they may need help inside their unit. So by having the shared common area, so under this one, it would be adding uh kind of what does this very low and low income design looks like. Um, one question, are we going to prioritize within her high priority? Are we just leaving them in the category of?
I think today is to try to just get the priorities, I think.
Okay.
I will, time permitting, but I think the priorities only.
Okay, and so one of my concerns is like, there's lots of lar- high priority middle of the medium and one of the low. And as we go through each one of these and you look at what's high priority, I'm worried about the staff workload and really what can be done, because high priority is in the next year or two. And so, but we may not do it tonight, but I would like to then highest extremist priority of which ones really should be first. Let's see, so I think B, I would put that as a higher priority. Um, that having, we've been talking a lot over the five years I've been here about the fact that we don't have impact fees. I understand that if you apply them to non-residential development, that it can affect the development of those projects from cost efficiency standpoint. But then we want to do all this housing. So the balance to me is how do you balance the in-lu fees to get the fees so that we can be able to do more of the low-income housing? And I think that goes to what um Jim, I think I got his name right, Jim Sullivan, talked about. Um, is this fee. And I know Mike Crisman comes constantly and talks about the impact fee, so I would move that up to a high priority. Um, I would think that G, establish pre-approved ADA plans. Go to San Jose, pull the plan off the wall and come over and give it to us to approve. But why spend time? If we know cities have pre-approved ADU plans, they're public, it's not copyrighted. You take the drawing and that gets us a step. It gets us without having to spend a lot of staff time, because if we have so many high priorities and it would allow these um people that want to build one, like I don't have to hire an architect, I can try to get it built quicker. Um, I'm fine with leaving ADU ordinance updates as a low priority based on everything else that's in here. I mean, I would love to put everything under high priority, but we can't. Um, the um, the providing certainty for housing developments. Um, a a lot of the conversation in here focused on parking. And I have um expressed, I think, my concerns about eliminating parking. I would prefer to have a project where you design, say, the first floor for parking now. And then convert it later, because people still have cars. And I've shared this scenario with Rob. Um, we have a woman with two kids, two jobs. She has a car. She's living in her car right now. It's a safe place. She locks her doors. She has a comfortable place, somewhat comfortable to sleep. She's working two jobs. She can drive to her jobs, take her kids to school and save time, because bus transfers from system to system lag time, it's time. To me, that person has, her time's more valuable because she has to work two jobs and that kind of stuff. Lo and behold, she gets a house. She gets a low-income unit. There's no parking. What does she do with her car? That was her lifeline. And now you're telling her, yes, you can have a house, but you're going to have to take four bus transfers to get to one job to go to the next job. And it's her security line, and it helps her be more efficient and and use her time, but more effectively to be with her kids. Then what happens if she can't afford to live in that house anymore? And she has to go out, and then she doesn't have a car to live in anymore. So I I I take that scenario to say great concept in the future, when we don't are driving our cars so much, but we're not there yet. And so to come up with a standard in between where build it now, make the roof taller, whatever you need to do. Plumbing utilities, so you can add showers, but keep parking. So under the standard of providing certainty for housing developments, it seems to be where parking has been placed. And uh, like I said, I just gave you my scenario of why I think we should not just immediately start saying no parking. Plus the impact that it does to our communities. Do we have to start having permit parking in multiple places across the city? Because the the people that don't have parking are taking over the residential neighborhoods, which need parking also. Um, so again, that's kind of my focus on the whole parking subject. Um, the development standards are in process. So I'll go back and summarize. Take off the whole thing about city-owned land, just not in eight years. We're not going to do it. Too much time, energy, too complicated. Um, move the uh fees, impact fees up. Understanding how complex that one can be and establish pre-approved ADU plans. To me, that's a day of work. Pull the plans, bring them to us, get them approved. Uh, so I would put that up under the high. Um, I think it's like the missing middle. I I again, I would probably want to put most, all of these under high, and I I'm very cognizant as we go down through this list is how we're going to then take each of these groups of high priorities and sort them out over the two years, which is the most important priority first. And what is the rolling effect of as, okay, we're working on this one now. Now we got to work on that one. Now we open now the third one now goes back and affects the first one. And so that's, I kind of want to see the connection between all these high priority ones.
And so may I ask a point clarification? So staff uh uh in the presentation said the high priorities are the first two years. This medium priorities are years three, four, and low priority is year five. Whatever. One to two, three, five and six to eight. So I just wanted to clarify for for um Councilwoman Landry, the the staff recognizes that there's a time constraint on what is a high priority.
Yeah, I agree. Around, but that's why I want to take the city-owned properties out, because it's so complicated. It it is down at the lower priority. Oh, and my last summary comment was about D, the unit sizes is, to me, it's also the design of these buildings and how can we integrate that? I I don't know what other word to use, but dorm style housing where the common area and bedrooms, and how does that help provide supportive services or for the disabled or de- developmentally disabled or things that need to be ADUs.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wyby.
Thank you. So I generally agree with the um priority list as it as it stands. On the inclusionary ordinance, I um Think it's important. That we need a method to clarify. The percentage of very low and low income. Units that we need to. Achieve for the city per arena numbers and so any. Any way to accomplish that so that there is clarity and that we do get closer to achieving those. Targets, I, I think is very important and it's my understanding that by modifying it that, that. We will be able to come up with some, some methodology or some clarification of what, what percentage is, is needed for. Low income and very low income. I support the over, exploring the overlay. Zone, which I think folds into. The item A. Recognizing that we do have a seventy five height limitation and I really would, my, my preference and. Is to, to maintain that it was voter approved and, and what we can do to preserve that is, is a priority for me. The rest. That the city owned. Land for affordable housing, it's in process and I see that is it should stay on the priority list until we get to down to the. Decision of whether or not that those sites are going to be viable sites for the. Housing element and, and that'll, that'll be in the fall, is that correct? Okay, so I see that, that, that should stay on. I, I'd like to see the on age, obviously some incentives to, to be able to entice developers to want to. Develop a low income or, or moderate income housing. The development, objective development stands or standards are in process. I support this exploring the linkage fees, I think that it requires a nexus study, but I think that folds well into the user fee study that's going to be planned in the next fiscal year. And the other remaining I'm okay with. And I, I, I'm not sure, I don't see the parking standards.
Some future slides.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, but is that part of this one? Okay, thank you.
Hold it, we'll come back to.
And that's my comments.
Thank you, and I'll comment, Rob, just some I have a couple of questions on and then just the ones that. Have a comment, if I don't comment, then I'm not taking any, any exception to it. Just like two, two questions on, on A, I think it was raised earlier, can we, can we even do that? Can we go below ten? Because I think that is a past discussion. And then the other piece, and this may be totally off the wall, if we do that and we have it below ten, are there any unintended consequences? Because ten, we know that's triggered the density bonus. I, I mean, I don't even know if this would be relevant, but might it trigger some different density bonus? And if that happens, does it trigger some other concessions and then we're talking about parking and we're talking, I don't, I don't know. But it seems like when you, when you mess with one spec. We, we see that that triggers this and especially with all, you know, throw in SB whatever and AB whatever. It may mean that that ten units that was going to be, you know, fifteen percent, two units of density bonus or two units of, of below market. Now is much bigger, much taller. Maybe because it's fifty percent, I, I don't know, but I'm just saying my concern on there is if we can do it. Let's just analyze what, what might be the downside or the. Or the domino effect, and by the way, it might be a good domino effect that we can now get more and we get more below market, it might be good. I, I have a feeling that there's going to be something that we don't know on this one, it just, just kind of nags at me. So let's throw that one out on, on D. When you're regulating sizes, you're not suggesting. Going beyond the height limits or you're suggesting more of the unit sizes, multi, multi housing development. Regulating to the smaller bedrooms to hit the, the, the two bedroom instead of three and a four bedroom, is that what we're? Talking about, but you're not, you're not suggesting going higher densities that would exceed what we otherwise would do.
No, I think, I think there was two points to this, one was. In general, there are exceptions to this, affordable housing can be smaller in production. Two, there was concerns, especially we talked about the higher densities on the housing opportunity sites, that there had been observations from council members. That when developers come in, they're proposing bigger units. And if you're doing sixteen units per acre and the units are bigger. There's a higher propensity to go above the height limits and make it much bigger, the massing is much bigger. So point number two was if there was a, a regulation on average unit size, it would. And again, that's average, not each unit has to meet a certain size. That would be a preventive measure, so the number of units wouldn't have a high, we came in at sixty units per acre. Now, the units would be smaller, so it'd be less propensity for them to have to go higher and have a bigger building.
Okay, so I guess the same question I have on A. Is there a scenario which because we lower, we, we encourage lowering the size of these units, they might make them more affordable? That we're going to then trigger some availability of. We have now X number of units below a certain level, now that triggers another density bonus or another. You know, we have, we have some projects coming in that are going to exceed our height limit because they're triggering, well, we'll put in so many below market, we can, we can do this and we can move parking. I, I don't know if this could happen, but might we trigger where we're creating? An environment where it's very easy to take that design and, and massively increase the size of it and maybe even extending above seventy five feet. Again, it may be something we want to do, but I just have a feeling on A and D, I kind of felt like. As we, as we play with that mix, we might trigger. Density bonuses, concessions, height limit, removing height limits and removing parking limits. That we may or may not want to do, so I guess I'm just eyes wide open on those, I, I, I just got a feeling that those are not. Very sure, oh, that's a good thing because we can get this, I have a feeling that there's other pieces of it. So I'm just, when you come back, I'm just going to ask for what's the, what's the consequences of it? On E. I, I agree a hundred percent with the Vice Mayor, I think that we're, we're bringing this back, this is the land, this is the, oh, city owned land. That we're bringing this back in the discussion of the arena numbers and I'm not willing to write off. Either of those parcels as undoable because that's the process when we're going to learn if they're undoable. And if they are, we're not only going to make this a low priority, we pretty much said we're going to remove them from the arena numbers and then it goes away. So I would, I would encourage us to leave it on there and analyze it then. I'll jump down to medium priorities. On B, I do have a concern of the impact on those commercial developments. So I think, I think it might have been referenced to be a nexus study and all that, so we, we, we have time to analyze that probably, but that's my concern. On G, I think that, that's fine, it makes, it seems like a no brainer to make it easier to build. But I want to tie in F and F, you've put a low priority, I think then put, you know, so, so G. Makes it easier to do an ADU and F puts a restriction on it that makes fewer people want to do an ADU, so F. F to me is a low priority, I would, I, I would like to see it just totally removed because by nature of their size, an ADU is going to be. Not technically below market, but less expensive than, than other types of units. So if we want to encourage ADUs, G makes total sense, F does not. And let's see, the la, the last thing I'll just comment on, you know, we'll get to parking later is. I am, I'm fine with what you have here as high, medium and low, my first initial thought was, I think what others thought too. This is just which is more important and it isn't, it's which is more timely and which, which is more? Short term, medium term and long term, and that changes the whole, the whole look of it for me. If, you know. There, if everything's a high priority, we've done, but there's no medium priority and there's no low priority, so. I, I, I equate that to the times that we had. City council priorities and there were twenty five and some of us noticed, and then we said, you know, we want to go to three and the three get done or we go to four and the four get done. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to staff to come back when you do and say that. This is our resource level and this is our time level and you might, you might say, given that we have now ten high priorities. They're not all doable and you might recommend, well, I'm going to make it up, H and I have to move to medium because we physically can't get it done. So I'd rather, I'd rather you come back and tell us if, at the end of this process, next time if we have. Over prioritized, but, but not, I don't want to play with what's high, high, medium, high, low, high. I just want to know at the time if, if you can do the high one to two years and if not, then, then they don't become lower highs, they become medium. To me, so I'll leave it at that and let us move on to.
Could I, just, the conversation's been very good for me because when I was using the example of the senior housing and saying, you know, this percentage. One of the components of an overlay zone would be if ten percent of the low income were senior specific. If, if there's a, a relationship to the data to the. Intent of how we implement it, that's what I'm looking for, thank you.
So let, can we move to objective two? Okay, and go ahead.
So I'll just note on, on number E, we've saved that for the end of the evening, you can skip past that one for now.
Yeah, he is what will pick up around eight thirty or so.
Correct.
Okay, and I'll tell you what, in fairness, let's start the other way, how let that taste start, start, start at this end and move down that way.
Okay, now I got to go find my notes here. What number is that? C, the short term vacation rental ordinance. I would put it as a medium priority. Because. We're building this housing to have for people that live here for the long term and then they build them and then they rent them out as a short term. And we already are, I already have seen that there are people doing short term rentals. And what's our enforcement mechanism for that? What, what are we, are we going on Airbnb and? Saying you can't do this, you can't do this, we're not, I don't see us. Proactively trying to enforce that people are renting these out. When our whole entire goal of all of this is provide long term housing, so. I would like to see the short term ordinance either. Do it in, in more detail to determine if we're going to have one or start enforcing the fact that we don't have one. Let's see here. I think I had greed, let's see. Number is that, oh, I'm sorry, that's on the next item, so other than that, they're all on the lower end and we're going to talk about E later, so I don't have. One, just double check, you caught me off guard here. Yes, that's the comments.
And we, and we've just, we've moved two and, two and three together here, right? Because they're smaller numbers, so you have three below, or did you have comment on that too?
Oh, he only talked about the first.
Yeah, so I think, I think because the first one was about half of them, we can consolidate down to one, then doing two and three together and I assume you're probably going to have four and five together.
Right, yeah, just so on the screen, you have both the preserve existing housing group, which has four of them and then also remove government constraints.
Which is three. Which is an objective. Three, we can kind of kill two birds with one stone here, not that I want to kill birds.
Yeah. Bird friendly building design, so we don't kill the birds. I've stated my case about parking. I, I guess we keep it as a high priority to resolve it. Because I know people on the planning commission wants us to get rid of parking completely, we're not there yet as a society. Our public transportation system is not there. And the statistics in here, we're saying, I think something like thirty percent of the people in low income and very low don't have a car, but what about the other seventy percent? And. So it's this whole thing of. Plan for it to be housing, but provide parking now, so that would, what I would want to keep it as a high priority to sort that out. And part of that would be, okay, you build this high density project and there's sixty units and nobody has a, a parking space, the parking in the neighborhood. So do we have a permit parking plan? And it's more than just whether the building provides parking, it's the whole overall impact to what it does to the parking that's there right now. And let's see. I thought, I think, I find it interesting that it's a low priority to improve the permitting streamline. Where that is an obstacle right now that we don't have it to then building these. So I find that interesting that it, there's not even a middle priority under this category, I would probably move that into medium to high. And same, you know, again, I probably would put all of these in high to medium instead of low. The development impact fees. Housing projects, the money we generate from our portion of the property tax. Does not offset the money we spend to, to provide them all the services, fire, police, lighting. Street maintenance, and so the more housing we develop. The more impact I, it's going to have on our budget. And so the impact fees, as mentioned earlier, similar to the in lieu fees. Is how can we offset our city budget, we have to maintain our fiscal stability. And if we build all this housing, can the city really afford to provide this high quality of service that we do? Provide currently right now, so I would not even have low priority in this category. Let me make sure here. I forget what the housing rehabilitation loan. Caught me off guard here, Paul, okay, let me go back here to D, see if I had notes on D. I don't have a D on my list of under. Maybe I'm looking in the wrong, okay, so I can't find what I had right now on that one. Sorry, oh. Okay, so. That one's fine, leaving that where that was.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lopez.
Great, so I'll be efficient now that I've, I've laid out my guiding, so, so just again, any, I, I'm just going to focus on areas of disagreement. Otherwise, I agree with the staff recommendations here. To be, I, I would move this one to at least medium, given that we heard. Consistent or, or have heard consistent feedback during the housing, housing element process and, and, and. Community conversations about, concerns about preserving this type of housing. I, I understand, I appreciate the information, the presentation and, and report. About the, maybe, you know, about what we can ultimately do, but. I, I think clearly this is a, a priority of the community that they, they want to see as, as a priority and supportive. And my only other one for this. Objection here is three B, similar to Councilwoman Landry, except I, I would actually move this one to, to high. Partly because this is one of the ones where I see a lot of synergy with what we're already doing, for example, we've, well, well, across the organization, we're, we're working to. Streamline to move to better online systems, we, we recently heard an item from finance a couple meetings ago. On, 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 on some of their, their systems. And so not, you know, you're right, not only is this something that is going to impact our success and, and these other areas. But it just is, is the way we, we are and should be moving as an organization, so. I, and I think that we, you know, we pride ourselves on our customer service and continue to provide that, that high quality. Especially because that, that's often the, the main interaction that many residents have with, with city staff, I think that would be a huge positive, but. Those are my only two for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Gibbons.
Thank you, I'm, I'm going to do it a little bit differently, I, because my notes are organized this way, on A, A, on the rent control ordinance. I don't support a rent control ordinance, but I would make two observations. The reference to our program of with. Whatever the group is right now. It isn't working, it, it doesn't function when. People have a problem, they come and, and complain and the property management, known as a company says. I'm not going to waste my time coming to your meeting because you have no authority over me, I'm not going to make any changes. So what we have with Project Sentinel does not work, however. I would think that we do need to develop something that does work. So how it's classified, not necessarily as a rent control, but there was some phrasing in there about being a. Tenant protection type of process, I don't know if this is doable, but one thought is that in the conditions of approval. Can you say you shall comply with the, the decisions of the rent mediation board? Something as simple as that might be helpful. I would also point out that Silicon Valley at Home had some very good seminars two years, three years ago now. And they had developers come in and asked about what was causing the time delay and the impact of rent control. And they said two things. One is that it's getting finances in place and that often takes two to three years. But they said why it can be problematic is if there's rent control, then the finance people are questioning whether, how soon they can make their money back and the and the factors used. So they were saying, don't put any rent control on for a rolling twenty or twenty-five years. So I thought those are two interesting statistics. I don't know if they're current anymore, but the thought process is probably similar. So I I want to do the same, which is protect mom and pops, no problem with that. But we also have in examples here in the city abuse by large corporations in out of state. So I do think we need something to protect tenants with some teeth. Uh, okay, B. Preserve mobile home backs. I I really, we, the what do you call it? Group Tinder, Timber Cove Group. I, it was, it was a difficult discussion to help them. The owner was reasonably cooperative, but it was stressful on everybody. I do think we need some kind of ordinance to preserve our one mobile home park, which is different than the one that's owner occupied. Short-term vacation rental ordinance, I've spoken out an item about this. I would say that it should be at least, I I think it should be a high priority because it's already happening. We have no control over it. We know in fact that it's being advertised. There are apartments in our buildings on Bascom and on railway that are advertised on Airbnb. We want all of our units to be available to rent. And when you have an Airbnb, when you have a short-term rental program, you can restrict it to a hundred and eighty days a year as being rented, which is an incentive to have it actually be occupied. So I think there are multiple reasons why. And then if you have a fee from the transient occupancy tax, that money can go into our housing program. We need funds to keep financing our, either our outsourced consultant or internal staff to manage the housing program. So I think there's a lot of unintended consequences that are beneficial if we have a short-term vacation rental. So I would make that a high priority. Housing rehabilitation loan program. I think we need to expand beyond rebuilding together. There's a lot going on and a lot of other programs. I honestly don't think it would take much to just expand our our webpage with a few more references. As opposed to waiting with five, five to seven, six, six to eight years, whatever it is. And then we'll talk about E. And then Objective Three, Government Modifying Parking Standards. Council's been browbeaten by the planning commission, that's for sure. I agree with what Councilwoman Landry has been saying. There was long discussions a long time ago. Single-family homes had more flexibility with parking. When you had an apartment building, there was a concern that they'd have more cars than the parking spaces provided. So there was a big analysis and maybe we need an a factual study that says when you have apartment buildings, they really do use one space or two spaces, because I know my opinion is very subjective. I I'd like to have some data that says it is reasonable because our streets are narrow. Allowing people to park on our streets is problematic. Neighborhood impact is significant. And if they're within a half mile of light rail, we don't have to worry about changing our parking standards. The states got laws that tell us what we can do for parking standards, which is you don't have to put in any. So I'm not so fussed if we could get some information that says within half mile, assume that they aren't gonna get any. The byproduct of that is you have to do a neighborhood impact thing. And two, I like Councilmember Landry was saying, it's called multiple use, so that you build your floor-to-floor situation. We have in the past talked about not allowing garages with ramps access because you can't reuse the the ramp space. So we were trying to make it multi-multi-purpose convertible. And I would say that one of the things I always liked is if somebody came up with a development and they left a portion of the parcel undeveloped, but they had a guaranteed approved entitlement. So that they kept parking for when they needed it on their site for their tenants as opposed or owners as opposed to taking the street parking from the community. And then they could develop it anytime they wanted when habits change because socially. Social engineering takes time. Okay, and I and we we have no control of the VTA. They have changed their schedules three times in the last five years. We have absolutely no control over it. So I I just don't think that's a realistic nexus. Improved permits streaming, I'm agreeing with others that have said, aren't we having to do that anyway? I I wasn't sure what exactly this was going to change from what we already have to be doing. So I thought that had to be high, not low. And then development impact fees for affordable housing projects. I think the answer to this one, I'm fine to leave it low. I think some of the work done under item number one will inform this. So I'm okay leaving this as a low priority right now. That cover everything?
I think it. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I do not support the rent control ordinance. So that I think that could be removed, but it's my 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 one voice. On the short-term vacation rental ordinance, I I wanted some clarification on that. I know council had a discussion a few meetings ago about the short-term rentals and I was expecting information to come back to the council as to data and to it, it, you know, the number of rental short-term rentals we have. It is that? Was that my a misunderstanding on my part? And is it, is this priority to to further that? Because at that point, at the of the meeting, I I I'm not really sure whether I want to support or of short-term rental awareness. I didn't have enough information in which to to make an informed decision. So
I'll start and sure, sorry, and the city manager can hop in. So I think there's a confluence of two areas to focus on this. The the conversation, I think it was a month or two ago, had a lot to do with transit occupancy tax and generating revenue. So if so one approach is if short-term vacation rentals are allowed legally, you can tax them and that's a revenue generation. And I know that conversation had come up. Separately, of course, if if housing stock is put in a short-term vacation rental, it's not available for long-term rentals. That's a trade-off. And then just a third component is they do have community neighborhood impacts. If so, a lot of jurisdictions have regulated how long to use them. So we had brought it back. It had come up in that conversation, but because it definitely affects housing stock. We don't want unintended consequences. We had put it within the lens of the housing element. Also, I think based on the conversation tonight and and elsewhere, we again, we prioritize how we bring it back with that analysis of how many units are in Campbell. What kind of program would we roll out? Would we to 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 Councilmember Landry's point, actually go out and create a program that addresses ones that are there right now? And the options would be, would you create a permitting program that might address both? Not allowing a lot of them to go, reduce housing stock, generate some fees also and have transit occupancy tax. So, but again, it had come up in a different lens about a month or two ago.
Okay, and and then on the is it item four? I I lost track of my numbers. The parking of three, parking standards. I do believe that we should be looking at that. I constantly heard since I've been on council that our standards are too restrictive and they need to be looked at and adjusted. So I would support that. And I would concur with the other comments about the the permit streamlining should be moved to a higher priority, either medium or high. It it just seems to contradict what our goal goals are in the city. And I think we're always trying to improve our process. So to me, that seems consistent with our objectives.
Thank you. So rent control, I'm not supporting it. I'm not supportive of changes to the mediation process. In B, so I appreciate the staff comments on the mobile home parks, because that's a that's a topic where the inclination to say, yes, we have to protect us. I think your analysis was good. We have an owner occupied park. And we also, it there may have been a difficult negotiation with the other, but it works out. It's worked out every year. And I don't think that we need to change any regulations to 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 you know, change the way that works. I think they're both working well. On C, a- at this point, I'm not supportive of short-term rental ordinance. I think that I review the vice mayor. We we had some discussion. I I don't I'm not comfortable that there's gonna be a good return on this. That's, I think, an analysis the staff was gonna do. And and absent those numbers, I'm not willing to do it. I think you raised some other issues. I've had on my street this exact problem of of daily rentals, which some of the the immediate next-door neighbors are very uncomfortable with. Yet there are houses on my street that are long-term rentals. And there's literally no difference between that how property and a property that's owner occupied. There's a very big difference of transient rentals and and long-term rentals. So I and also, like I said, the bottom line, I don't, I don't think that we're gonna get that much revenue. And I also think if you start doing things like restricting to how many days per year, adding code enforcement costs. And current code enforcement is not gonna be able to handle that. So adding the cost to some, you add in one person and I and I would almost bet we'll wipe out everything we get. So that's just my gut feel. And if you say, well, but we these are going on now and they're causing a problem, then then we would be getting code enforcement complaints and they can be dealt with. So I'm not supportive of that unless you come up with numbers that show it makes financial sense. Parking, I'm not against changing the standards. We have heard in some cases that were very restrictive. This is now to three A. The the issue I have, and they've been raised here, it i- is a few things. Well, if we're by late rail. So the 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 government's taking care of that for us. We're not gonna have a lot of a lot of input into projects that are within a transit-oriented zone. And they're gonna remove parking. We're looking at that right now in East Campbell, right? That's gonna happen. So it doesn't help us near light rail. And and if if it did help us near there, I always question, you know, how valuable is light rail for most people? It's not not tremendously valuable. And then Councilmember Gibbons raised the question of VTA changes. But you know, we're assuming that but for the next twenty, thirty years, there's gonna be a light rail. If, you know, in the past, if you were willing to take light rail up past, say Levi's Stadium, well, once they change it, we had to change trains and wait. That may have killed some people using it. They can make those changes anytime they want. I was on the VTA pack at the time they were doing that. And their original thing was to change the Campbell line as soon as you hit downtown San Jose. And there was a bit of pushback on that. And how many people would have gone past downtown San Jose on light rail if that happened? So light rail to me is the qualifier for being height, height or or transit zone is always iffy. The 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 flip side is that you know, we do have multifamilies in apartments now. And that was the problem we had at La Valencia, of multiple families living in an apartment and therefore having two, three, four cars. And to just ignore that, it's gonna spill over into into neighborhoods. And then we get into the problem of parking permit zones that we've talked about. I generally don't support those. And once we do one, then start taking every neighborhood one by one. The 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 zones worked in the Millet neighborhood only because you had artificial blocks of Santa Mas Expressway where nobody was parking across the street and crossing Santa Mas. You had Hamilton Avenue and you had San Jose forcing it because they were all the San Jose people were taking the parking there. We had no choice. But had we not had a neighborhood that was essentially blocked off by major streets, I'm not sure we would have done it. We might have just said, you know, we gotta live with this until we can negotiate something with San Jose. So I I I I don't wanna do something that almost forces us to start considering parking permit zones because we're gonna have those all over the city then. I don't think it's positive. And let's see. So and and the last one is B, the streamlining. I I I agree that that's we we keep saying, let's streamline every every process we can. But when I look at your notes in here, I think you're, I think you're not saying that it's not a priority. You're saying that SB thirty-five is taking care of some of it. And that you're kind of saying, wait till we have objective standards in place and then identify what areas need to be streamlined. Did I, did I read it right? I mean, that's how I read it. Be- be, I I I thought that was in the in the analysis. Did I read something wrong? Because I don't think anybody's arguing that we need to streamline processes. That's something we've said for years and we've been doing. But I thought there was some logic into why, and and that's what, three? Three B, right? Yeah, looking for, yeah. Did I, did I read the wrong? Maybe I scrolled through here and picked up the wrong.
So three B is really speaking to providing specialized permit streamlining for affordable housing developments in the city. That said, we're saying separately, we are working on our objective standards update. As part of that, we're gonna be looking at permit processing. There is SB thirty-five. There are all these other things which are ongoing, which will also help already contribute the permit streamlining, which would extend beyond just affordable housing. All of it, all housing would be streamlined.
So you're saying, so nobody's saying that streamlining is not a high priority. You're saying thirty, SB thirty-five addresses some of it. When we get the objective standards, we could address a broader scale of street mining and take and and potentially take care of that issue. That was that the that was the direction or the reason for staff's recommendation?
That's correct.
Okay, so so I'm supportive of that. I think this, I think that the issue here is not disagreement. I think it is a priority. But I think that you're just cognizant of the fact that everything can't be high. So given your logic on there, I'm I'm willing to support that as well. And I think, I think that's it. So we can.
If I may, just a clarification on your last point. That was very helpful. Thank you. I'm fine with that understanding, but staff also added one more thing, which was streamlining permitting processes for affordable units. That that needs to be incorporated into the language of this discussion because it's not there.
Correct. I I think, I think what I'm saying is I I agree if they're doing a broader scale. I I I, it's kind of like to me, the mobile home, they had a different thought going in. And then I read it and I appreciate the analysis saying this makes sense to me. And you're at least, you are prioritizing and then recognizing we can't do everything. So so I'm happy with that. If you wanna move, I guess we can move to what, four and five? Thank you. Okay, yeah, please.
I I I just wanna make sure so that I know what we're referring to here. Could I, could I get the answer to that question about the two E versus five A?
One more time, Councilmember, what were the two reference numbers just so we have, right?
I'm sorry, both touching on workforce housing, but just how you're differentiating for the purposes of discussion.
I ask Mr. Bradley to address that.
Thank you, Mayor Resnikov, members of the council, Jeff Bradley with them group. Workforce housing is one of those very, very broad terms that gets used in different ways, in different contexts. At the most basic level, you're really talking about housing that or a population of folks that make enough money where they don't qualify for traditional forms of affordable housing. And I put that in quotes because those are the defined terms we've been talking about. Very low income, low income, moderate income. Those are all affordable housing categories that go up to a hundred and twenty percent. Has been, has been discussed tonight by the council. Go up to a hundred and twenty percent of the of the area median income. So it actually goes over the the midpoint of the of the average household. And so workforce housing, if you're an affordable housing provider and you're focused on very low and low income, workforce housing could be anything over eighty percent up to a hundred and twenty percent. Uh, in some communities, like in Santa Barbara, they designed a workforce housing program, going all the way up to two hundred percent of the county median income in that community. In this area, generally, workforce housing can be considered by housing folks to go up to about a hundred and fifty percent of a of area median income. And where you draw the line on the lower end of it, you might talk more about with the opportunity, uh, housing site folks tonight about where that where that line is drawn. So there there can be some overlap with the true affordable housing categories, but it can also extend above it.
Oh, yeah, just document a little bit, because I'm I'm catching a phrase we had there that might have left. So I think what Jeff spoke to is a lot of the opportunity workforce housing discussion will happen at the end of the evening. I'm looking on the phrase on the screen for five A, which says fulfill housing needs for special needs populations and workforce housing. The real focus of that is the special needs populations. If that helps clarify.
Yep, yep, that clarifies it for me. I give you. Okay, so we'll move on to objectives four and five. We'll start. Councilmember, we're going to try to finish the twenty five minutes so we can get the opportunity housing. So if everybody just cut, not just you, everybody's conscious in a, I could do the fight, I could do the clock again, which we're great.
I think we're all trying.
No, I think we're going well. I'm just kind of pointing out the time. That's all. Now I think we're actually being efficient.
All right. Uh, let's see. I gotta go down here. You want to start with me again? Yes. That what you just saying? Okay, so on number four, resilient housing policy, my comment is I'm fine with it being low, but I would like to say that this really, to me, rings true of needing our climate action plan. We don't have a climate action plan. We need a climate action plan. And in my opinion, sooner rather than later. Resilient design. Also, there's a lot of state building codes coming out now with, they're changing the green building code that ha- will have a lot of influence on this. Also, staff is coming forward with the new twenty two, twenty twenty two California building code with modifications and the reach point two oh code. So a lot of that will be handled that way. It might make it easier for staff to deal with that. I think it's low, but I think there'll be some value in that. And, yeah, so the site, a siting development, I think is climate action plan related and resilient design, I think is going to be covered in the building code efforts. So that's okay for leave it as low. Five affirmative furthering, fair housing. I'm absolutely fine. I've been strongly supportive of providing our ordinance update to allow for nonprofits to buy or rent multi bedroom, multi unit facilities so they could do a halfway house for people out of foster care or for a, a family environment with privacy, but a house parent for the disabled community. Strongly support that and, and, and have for a long, long time. So we just have to revise our, our program for who is eligible for these units. Here's another case where the word senior shows up. This is an example of where seniors could also have a priority. And I know this is going to add a workload and is not intended to, but without understanding how we're going to manage this. This is really significant. And I, I, I'm, I would, I, I don't necessarily want to ask staff to, to do a whole research paper and do all of that, but it would be nice if there was just some little outline. This is sort of what we think we'll have to change and do to implement this. If it was just something simple, a memo that what I think would be helpful. And staff has this one as a high priority, which I'm absolutely completely in agreement with. And I've spoken to the renter protection thing before. And I, I, council, Mayor Resnikoff, the rent mediation board, I don't think has any members and I don't think it's met in years because it's completely ineffective. So it's been, yeah, it's about three and a half, four and a half years ago. So we need to do something. I don't know what that is. But we need to do something. So I do think we need renter protection. I'm fine not doing a rent control. And ADU incentives for, and so that one is listed as low. I'd like to make that at least medium because we, we're fifty percent renters. And to do so much for our homeowners and, and things and not think about our renters. I have, I, I, I'm not comfortable with that, to be honest. And then our last one, what have we got here? ADU incentives for special needs. I'm fine with that not being there. I think ideally we will be covering that in the larger projects. And I think that is another area where we could do incentives if the percentage is made to be a special needs population. Those are kinds of things where the statistics can be informing what our incentives are. I think that would be excellent. Outreach and education for fair housing laws. Yeah, we have to do all of that and equity training for staff. I do think that that's important. It's changing and understanding and, and everything there needs to be done. What's missing in the categories is environmental fairness. That's a, and a significant consideration. Climate change, we've spoken to. And I also wanted to put in here. Electric building codes are coming forward, but what people don't realize is that when we talk about being rent burdened, you're talking about maximum of thirty percent of the income. And that's some one other point, thirty percent of the income going for rent. People are spending twenty, thirty percent of their income on utilities. So we want to have some kind of, and I don't know how it fits into the categories, but it came up under equity training from my thought process. Is we want to understand that there is benefit to and, and benefit to, to being affordable if you're managing utility costs. And to me, one thing that is kind of a layer that's missing from all of this is, and I, we're talking about new housing in this category. We're missing existing housing. So I'm, again, I don't know quite what it means, how to do affirmatively furthering fair housing. But if there's something we could do that helps people understand how to be, manage their utilities. There's a lot, and they talk about seniors being on, under the poverty line. I go around all the time helping seniors learn how to get excluded from paying school bond fees. I get them signed up for Cara and Farah utility things. Anything you can do to help them reduce their monthly costs. So those are programs you could do. And other things to help people manage their monthly costs. And some of those are just simply putting in a control, a, a, a control thing that can be monitored on the internet. And changing out the, to the heat pump. Somebody mentioned heat pumps, changing out to heat pump technology for hot water heaters. Significant cost savings as well as, as being good for the environment. And then obviously we want to do multilingual programming and, and medium is fine for that.
Thank you. Councilman Lopez?
Thanks. Two, two things here. Resilient housing, I, I struggled a little bit with, with how to respond to this. I, I, I don't. If, if we're just talking about what's in the staff report, those specific examples, I, I would probably agree low priority. But, but I strongly agree with councilmember Gibbons and, you know, the, the example cited that the state building codes coming down. I, I just have information on the new sequel standards that, that were adopted earlier today. There, there's going to be, this is the, the direction that the various pressures, bodies, boards are, are, are moving in. And, and keeping with state, like they have orders and mandates that have been laid out. And so I, I, I think we're just that kind of consideration, you know, we, we need to be moving or, or otherwise we'll be moved eventually, I think, in that, in that direction. So, so need to be thinking about how those considerations impact our, our housing, our, our, our housing considerations. So a, again, with the, with the report, not, you know, necessarily any objections there. I just think there's a little bit missing in, in these categories that would at least bump it up to the medium term timeframe that we're talking out for me. The, and the other thing I'll, I'll say here is I, I really strongly want to advocate for multilingual information up to high priority. Just because I, I, I can't believe that, that we aren't doing this already. And of, of the other policies are really difficult topics that, that we have to think about. This one is in rocket science and I, I don't think it would be, you know, you bring in other outside resources, but I don't think it'd be a big cost. And so with, with respect to staff and, and I, you know, what Spanish has mentioned in the staff report, I would go to at least the top three languages spoken and in the area. There's also some nuances a, a, around, you know, some, some, there, there may be bigger and absolute demographic numbers, but other cultures get more of the information and, and their first language versus the, a, a, other speakers get it. Are just used to getting in English. So there's some nuance there, which I think is, is why going to at least two or three would be helpful. But I, I just think that that's something that relatively speaking, that we could knock out with, with relatively low resources and would be a big benefit to the, to the community. So those, those are the, my two changes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Landry.
Yes, thank you. Liz mentioned about environmental is not used here anywhere. As mentioned, the California state building codes, we're going to probably not have gas in a couple of years. That, that's a trend right now. We've already have our reach codes that we passed about the two heaters and space heaters and water heaters not having gas. But the building code, there's quite a lot of information I get how they're discussing no gas in California at all. So some of resilient housing is going to be dictated by the state, just like housing bills are now. They're going to start coming down with resilient design, bird friendly design, energy efficiency design. You know, the utility costs that we have, water, for instance, that's one. How can you make your house more water efficient? The, the things that go with that, that's the Cal Green portion of the building code. I don't think every city has to adopt it, but it is going to become something that you have to adopt. And so I think by default, this is going to become a high priority because we're going to start having to update our municipal codes for, to integrate how the new building code. And I think we do it in January of twenty three, we bring in the twenty twenty. October of twenty three, we bring in the twenty twenty two building code and a lot of this stuff is going to be in there. And to me, it's important because of how much money utility costs are and how much they're going up. PG&E is going up, the water's going up, sewer is going, you know, all of these things that you're spending. And if you're on a fixed income and all of a sudden you get a bill that's two hundred dollars a month more because of utilities, then your building should be better designed. Your building should be more resilient. You should have more energy efficiency. But like I said, this is going to come forced upon us, just like the state is using for housing. I support the housing needs for special needs population and workforce housing as a high priority. I do support the multilingual information on housing programs. I haven't looked at the statistics lately, but if you made a relationship between who has English as a first language versus who doesn't, and then how that plays into their affordability. And a lot of these programs are going to try to help people that maybe their second language is not, or the first language is in English. So they don't understand all these things that they could take advantage of. So I would support the multilingual language information and add sign language to there. I don't, the renter protection, that low is fine. The ADU incentives for special needs, actually that could be part of the fulfill housing needs for special needs population. To me, they're somewhat related to each other.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I have a question on four A and B. In the staff report, it, the recommendation is that they, it be considered as part of the objective standards update. It's listed as a low priority, but if we're updating the objective standards in the next year, why, why wouldn't this be included in the, why would it be a low priority?
Good question. I think what staff was thinking, sort of the thinking behind this is in areas where we already have work plans going forward and it's high. And I know we're probably not a hundred percent consistent. But to put more resources separately into this doesn't make sense. So if that, if that logic holds, since we're already working on objective standards, number one, and number two, we are going to be updating our green building policies and a couple of other things are, are thinking is separate from that. We don't need to have more resources in this category, if that helps.
I'm not sure I understand that.
Yeah, that, well, so, I mean, there's a couple of these areas where we're, again, we're already, we're already having a work plan to focus on an area that's very similar to this and we would address this anyway. And again, that's objective standards is a high priority. We're focused on that. I'm not sure if it did come out, but I, the thinking behind this is we will start, it's on the work plan, the climate action plan sometime next year. This year, we're going to look at updating our building codes and reach codes and address EV and PV standards. And on all those things holistically are going to address this. And the thinking is, and I probably didn't come all the way out in the report, that since we're doing all of those things, the need to, to, to place a high priority above and beyond those things on this category isn't necessary.
So in other words, it will be considered as part of the objective standards and be a higher priority than low.
If, if I may, I'll also just simply add, objective standards is absolutely a high priority and we're already undertaking that effort now. But the thought process here would be that we'd be completing that effort and then after we see where that lands and see where all of our new objective standards are, we could then revisit these. So that, that we're putting these as a low priority because a focused effort on just these points would then be following the objective standards update once we have standards in place. We'd evaluate, did we do a good job? Did they, did they go far enough? Let's let the dust settle on the objective standards and then revisit in, in a, in a focused way.
And I'll just comment that it reminds me of the comment that was made in the early part of the meeting where the planning commission said that items that are low priority don't get done. And, and that tends to happen with legislation and ordinances that part, they get partially updated, but not in, not entirely. So it just seems like it should be a, a, a more of a focused effort to get those included in the, in the objective standards since that is a priority and, and state mandate. And then I would also concur with moving the multilingual information to a higher priority.
Thank you. No, no comments on four, but on five, I'm, I'm certainly supportive of A, my, my questions or comments. So you, you note here a special needs populations identified the date. So do we expect that this, that this list expands? I mean, how, how did this list come about? Is there some defined definition or is this staff's take on it or, or where's it going?
No, those aren't defined in state law. Those. Yes.
Okay. And then if we have restrictions on the property that identify one or more of these groups, are we very secure in the belief that those restricts, that those restrictions or the use to these special needs populations stay? For example, if we gave a, a consideration of no parking because it was for elderly, just say, but then sometime down the road, we expanded that property beyond elderly, you might all of a sudden be under parked. What, what, how, how does the restriction stay on this property and how long does it stay on this property?
Well, that, that might bring in a legal lens where I'd, I'd be out of my way. I'd, I'd say generally, and we haven't defined all the, the programs that would come out of this. I mean, I think we're all within our means in these categories to have programs that address these seniors, for example. You can do that. But to the extent that something is completely did restricted and not available to other populations, I think we'd have to look more into that.
So my only concern would be that if we're doing restrictions and those restrictions have to stay long term. And then the other piece of that would be, for example, I think there's an example here of talking about reducing parking because it's seniors. Yet times change and that's exactly what got us in trouble at the Corinthian House. Because all of a sudden, people that were in their eighties continued to drive and had cars and there was no parking there because when the place was built, whether in the sixties or seventies, they, they didn't foresee that. So things can change. So we're just going to be cognizant of that. The other piece of it is you don't address it here, but you address it in C. We have to be able to regulate that that's the groups that are in there. So you do note it for the ADUs of the special needs, that how do we give incentives and how do we know that's what it's rented to? We need to do the same here. And I only pointed out because we do this for below market housing now. And if anybody wants to look at the cost we have to monitor below market housing and how much we're paying an agency to do that. And I'm not commenting whether it's valuable or not, it's just expensive, right? So this could incur a significant cost that isn't being paid back because of fee waivers and things like that. So just a thought. I, I, I'm not supportive, I said before, and, and, and changes to renter. And C, for, for, for the reason I said earlier of putting restrictions on ADUs, I think that somebody that wants to build that is going to build that, but we put restrictions on it and say you can rent to is going to reduce the available builds. And then staff points out here, how do we know it was rented properly? We've already given incentives. That worries me. So I, so I'm okay with pretty much all the priorities. I'm certainly not, not beyond E or F moving that up. I mean, I, I think as it has been said, I would suspect those things have been done or should be being done. Anyway, so one, one of the comments I'm going to make, and we have like four minutes before our goal, which is really good. Anyway, so one of the comments I'm going to make, and we have like four minutes before our goal, which is really good. If others may want to comment, I'm about to say, but let's take 30 seconds. It was mentioned earlier, the very last thing you mentioned, nobody's wrote it back amazingly, is the Planning Commission suggested raising the height limits to above seventy five feet. I'm just going to make one comment and we'll see if anybody agrees. I think those height limits should be usurped by state law and by voters and not by council. And I don't, I don't think we can do, I don't think we can do it nor should we do it. So if anybody, I mean, I don't think there's any disagreement there, but it wasn't brought up, and that was something that that we're going to see is going to be usurped. But it shouldn't be asked. I don't, I think it can be asked. So I think everybody's in agreement on that.
Yeah. What I would, okay, so it was a voter approved ballot to stay in the seventy five foot height because of what happened with the prune yard. We are, the state laws with the density bonuses are going to allow people to go taller than that. And during the housing selection site process, I made the comment that on Bascom between the prune yard and Southwest Expressway, I don't have a problem going taller there. That to me, you've got the prune yard already, you're going to have a hundred and fifteen foot tall tower and the Google thing at Southwest. There's not a lot of neighbors there. I would say those are the places where you could go higher, but I think that'll come out of the density bonus part of it and everything. But do we have to go back to the voters to to make it a policy? And I don't think council should be making that decision. If it went to the voters, it should go to the voters.
Agreed.
The other thing that a lot of this, all of this stuff we're talking about assumes that people are going to follow all these rules. That's a low income person that has to rent it. We're having problems with the BMR Sentinel Program where someone got it at considering their low income. They actually moved out or renting it out and the enforcement factor. And a lot of these policies come down to enforcement, and we have one person. And so I want to see when we come back with the budget, not maybe this year, but the following year is, do we need three people now for enforcement to make sure that these programs? You know, if we're trying to serve the very low and low income, how do we make sure that happens? And how do we make sure that after these are built, they all say, yes, yes, we're going to do this. And the next thing I know, they're making a hundred and fifty thousand a year, and they're living in this little teeny two unit. So enforcement should be coming back as a staff of comments or budget items.
Okay. Is there final comment or?
Yeah, related to that, actually, I believe enforcement for affordable units is a separate issue. It's not our, our current enforcement, our enforcement is for code compliance. So I think, I think of them as different. I think it's part of the program. It's part of the program of the below market rate program. One thing I wanted to mention somewhere in the staff report, and I of course couldn't find it now, it was talking about putting affordable units near the light rail. And I think what I was trying to point out is there are a lot of affordable units near the light rail around the Bud Safeway. There's a massive amount of parking apartments there. And in the downtown, there's a massive amount of apartments down there. So there was a general statement about the city overall doesn't have the right mix or something. And yet you want it near the light rail. Well, if you do a logistical study of where that the apartments already exist, you may be needing it better than the overall assumption. So I would point that out.
Okay, thank you. Comment, and we're almost ready at our time.
Yeah, I'll be brief. I want to say, I don't know if anyone's listening, but thank you to our Planning Commission for all the work and thinking that that helped inform our discussion. I found that report very helpful. And thank you to staff for incredible amount of work that that's gone into this. Even we have disagreements, it's been really productive, and I appreciate how much it took to get here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we shot for eight thirty, it's eight twenty nine. We did a good job. Thank you, everyone. So we're going to, we're going to address the opportunity housing proposal. If I understand right, staff has a presentation. We'll open a public comment at that point and give the applicant five minutes to speak. But Rob, you're going to start out, and then we'll bring back the council. And the goal here will be if we want to bring this back in May as a, as a standard item on, on a regular meeting agenda.
Great.
Yes. Sure. So, yeah, eight thirty five, eight, eight thirty five. We're on break. Thank you. Sorry about that. Then let's move ahead to the opportunity housing proposals. The staff will start with a, with a presentation, then we'll hear from the applicant, bring back the council and see if there's an interest in then pursuing that.
Yeah, so after discussion with our city attorney out of an abundance of caution because of my proximity to the site, I will be recusing from this item. We'll follow with a longer analysis. Is that correct? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. So and we'll call you back when we're, we're done.
Okay, well, I'll open Stephen Rose will have most of the presentation. I'll just say this was kind of an unusual confluence of events. Most of the discussion night is on potential housing policies and programs, high to low, and there's a timeframe. As we could start this conversation analysis, we were approached by the group that's before today that said in one of the categories where we have housing policies, they have a potential opportunity to move forward now. So initially, there was thoughts of bringing this separately. My thought was to have the council holistically look at our policies and programs, consider this as a part of it. But because the the timing on the request is before you is a little more near term, we wanted to put this at the end of the agenda to consider it a little separately. So it's sort of a confluence of two different things. So with that, I'm, again, the structure is Stephen Rose has done research into, it's a pretty, pretty new program in California and some of the pros and cons and considerations for council. The applicant I know has a five to ten minute presentation. We presented at least one to two options for you to consider going forward, and that's the structure for this. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Rose.
Great. And just picking up from where we left off on the policy set. So this is in furtherance of objective two, which is the preserve existing housing. It's a letter E. And again, just to preface my presentation, we do have a request from how, Opportunity Housing Group. They also have their own presentation, I think seven slides, mine's a little bit shorter at three, so I tried to keep it brief. This is regarding workforce housing or the CSCDA JPA, and it's a long acronym. I even left a couple, I think, letters out. It stands for the California Statewide Communities Development Authority. And specifically, this is the Community Improvement Authority. Next slide. So I just, just a high level overview of what this is and how it works. The bolts here on the screen, screen indicate that it, its intent is to reduce rent for middle income households. It does this by really using tax exempt bonds to purchase rental units, which once, once acquired are, those properties become tax exempt. Today, this program's been used to acquire and convert over 7,000 housing units for low and middle income households. To do this, to participate, really, the city must have, the city council would need to adopt resolutions, both joining workforce housing JPA and approving a public benefit agreement. Now, the distinction here is the public benefit agreement is usually project specific while entering into the housing authority JPA is more broad, just saying that you will, will be interested in participating and entertaining proposals. Beyond that, this, this program, there's, there's rumors about this opportunity closing due to climbing interest rates to be more difficult for these projects to pencil out in the future. And that as staff, we've identified this as a median priority, given positives and negatives of the program, which I'll cover on the next slide. Next slide. So just in the staff report and here on the screen, we're identifying just a few of the positives and negatives of the program. This is as we understand it to date, and I can't say as much as research, as much research as we've done, there's always more to learn. On the positives column, we've identified that there is really no liability the city to enter into these agreements. Residents are not displaced. These programs are also considering offering a host fee, which would offset tax losses. Those are property tax losses to the city. The city may also negotiate priorities such as what types of household units should be prioritized, like those, those special needs populations we identified earlier, as well as certain affordability provisions such as instead of it being, say, thirty five percent, like the, that the income moments go down to thirty five percent of somebody's household income, we could maybe lower that down to thirty percent. Additionally, there's rent increases are capped. It's a four percent, which is significantly less than AB fourteen eighty two. And the city acquires property and may sell that property within fifteen to thirty five years. I think fifteen years is the first right to acquire and then sell. Thirty five years is usually when the the bonds have really fully come to fruition and that the property is usually free and clear of all outstanding debt. And the negatives, just from our observations, again, a lot of the talk we've had to date is how are we satisfying the city's regional housing needs allocation? There'd be absolutely no credit towards satisfying arena under this program. The short term benefits, and I'm, I should, we characterize it as immediate term benefits are very limited. Also, times it requires the, the rental units to turn over, so it requires the lease agreement to come to term. So to say if somebody has a one year lease, at the end of that lease, then they potentially get a benefit from the program. On the long term side, especially as if tenants stay in their unit for a long period of time with that rent cap in place, there's, there can be a very significant benefit to our rental, our households, but also potentially the city as well. If we, if this, once we do acquire the asset, we sell it, there could be a windfall to the community. So it could be a significant long term benefit, but it also kind of does rely a little bit on market stability. Additionally, there's, there could be an impact to school and county revenue. Specifically, I think the Campbell Union High School District would be possibly impacted by the program. And that these are ultimately, at the end of the day, they're, they're highly leveraged properties. They, they kind of have, they're being bought at above really market rate by a degree. And they're loading up debt, which is paid off by these bonds. But there's a potential risk of default, which may impact the surrounding community if that were to occur. And it's particularly at the highest risk is always going to be early on in the program. So when a unit is first purchased, you have the highest debt asset ratio. So your first five years or so is kind of, I don't want to say the scariest, but that'd be the, where the risk would be greatest. And with that, we have one more slide. Just go ahead and advance one more. So just in terms of next steps and kind of what we're recommending, the, well, I'll put it like this, the Opportunity Housing Group request, what they're asking from the council is for us to adjourn, us to schedule a meeting in May next month, which would really be exploring opportunities for allowing the park at Prune Yard to become one of these, these opportunity housing sites. And again, as previously stated, it would require the city to join a workforce housing. These opportunity housing sites. And again, as previously stated, it would require the city to join a workforce housing JPA. As well as approve a public benefit agreement for the Park at Pioneer. Next slide. So as options which we're identifying as staff and kind of outlined in our our prior report, just in the way that we're handling priorities, we are. We staff are recommending that we do not move forward with the opportunity housing program now. And instead maintain it as a medium priority, allowing for future consideration. Really understand that there'd be additional research and analysis, which might need to go into this additional fiscal study and. There are so many other priorities that we're working on that this might not be at the top of the pack. That said, as an alternative, the the council absolutely may direct staff to return with resolutions. In May, such as on the the fifth or which is a special meeting or on a regularly scheduled meeting on the seventeenth. Whereby staff would be the one preparing a fiscal analysis of this of the proposal that's before you or will be before you. As well as recommended negotiation points, which we might want to explore as a community, such as. With these programs, the the city always has the ability to influence the the final proposal. And the three points which we have here on the screen are. Again, the exact amount of money that the city receives as part of the property, the the host city fee, which is that that kind of offset. City impacts from the property tax payment or loss of property taxes. Two is the exact BMR affordability level and mix. What what exact what what exact allocation of low or moderate and exactly at what level of affordability those would be. And then. Finally, identifying any special needs populations priority for units, which is teacher housing. The city already has as part of our our inclusion ordinance, we do have a ranking of priority criteria that applies to BMR units. These wouldn't necessarily, that wouldn't necessarily extend to these. We would need to establish our own ranking priority if we wanted to have one as part of this program. So that'd be if you wanted to prioritize city staff or people who work in the city or live in the city. Or teachers or special needs populations that would need to be stipulated separately in order to have that conveyed. And with that, I believe our presenter today is Brad.
Before before we do that, Stephen, are there questions for staff?
Yes, I I don't see this on the agenda.
Well, as as I mentioned, it was it's it's one of the programs that's in your housing element.
I totally appreciate that. Yeah.
Yeah, and it and again, the opportunity to move forward, that program can be more short term. So we have someone moving forward with a request on an action associated with one of the programs.
I'm just, I I appreciate that. I'm just saying, I feel awkward that it isn't listed as an agenda item.
Steve, oh, please.
I actually have met with Brad and I think there was three of us there that we met and talked about this and. I'm somewhat confused. When I met with him, the one, the comment I made is. What is the benefit to the city and what is the benefit to you as a development? And I would like to have seen more background material to read ahead of time. So by having it now as a presentation, kind of out of sequence of what we normally would do, I'm sitting here like a little very confused to. To say that I would have liked to have a staff report to understand better. I know you're going to give us a presentation, but I I question it the way Liz did is it wasn't on the agenda. And to me, we don't have a lot of information, but we're here and we're going to move forward.
And I might add that it really doesn't give the public an opportunity to speak because they don't even know that this is being discussed. So I I'm a bit uncomfortable. With a presentation that I feel should be presented at a regular council meeting and a request that point. With information available in whether or not we want to. Participate in the program.
We'll leave it at that. Let's go. Let's we're here. Let's go forward with the presentation.
Good evening. Thank you very much. There we go. How's that? Can you guys hear me? Okay. Right from my mouth there. Pretty nice. Yeah, well, it's my office or my house. Thank you.
Good.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you. All right. Well, good evening. I'm Brad Griggs, one of the partners with Opportunity Housing Group. We're locally based here in Danville, California, in the Bay Area. I want to give a little bit of my objectives tonight, just to give you an introduction of the of the program and then to describe the Pruney property here, the Parker Pruney. And the opportunity we have with that property and then next steps that we're trying to move forward with. So let me start there and work through this with you. So I'm going to use the arrow here. So let me just give you a little overview of who we are. So first of all, as you may know of the programmer may not. The way this works is that we we work in a strategic partnership with CSCDA and CSCDA is really the largest joint powers authority in the state of California. Five hundred and thirty three cities are members of it. They have various programs to help cities. I believe Campbell is a member of CSCDA. And the way this program works is they've created a workforce housing program called CSCDA Community Improvement Authority. So what happens is is that. The city, as Stephen pointed out, would be joining the workforce housing Joint Powers Authority of CSCDA. And then by that, by doing that, then we're eligible then to go out and to look for opportunities in the community to convert to workforce housing. Our company, we've been around for quite a long time since the since two thousand and ten. And I've been, this is my next year, my fortieth year in business and during real estate. So I've been around a long time. We've done a lot of different developments, acquisitions, asset management. So we're very well healed. We have a development company called Blake Griggs Properties. We have Opportunity Housing Group as our workforce housing company. Last year, we closed almost a billion dollars in bonds and almost nearly sixteen hundred units were converted to workforce housing. We've had some great success stories with that. So when the earlier projects we acquired today, we're seeing rent savings as much as eight hundred and fifty dollars a unit per month. So it's a big, big win in terms of the residents in the program. We work as City Group as our bond underwriter. They're the largest municipal bond underwriter in the in the in in the country. And in California, they do majority of all the affordable housing programs. Gray Star is our property manager and we act as the as the asset manager. So I wanted to just mention, you know, I think I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here because you guys are very familiar with this. But we're really in a housing crisis and what we're finding is is that what used to be, when I first started the business. In the early eighties, where you could build an apartment for about forty thousand a unit, today you're building apartments for seven hundred thousand dollars a unit. And the reality of it is is that what used to be apartments that were focused for essential workers and for middle income folks. Now they're just being priced out of the other completely. So we're losing sight of the fact that there's this real opportunity here and and a real need for this. And as you know, the impact hurts families, communities, employers, any environment. It's not really possible to keep up with the demand with new construction. And the other thing is is that programs that are in place today are really focusing on the low income and very low income housing. So the missing middle is being missed. And so what this program is, is that they're working with, we're working with CSCDA to help. Create a really elegant solution, and I'll go into that in just a second with you. In Campbell alone, thirty one percent of the renters are twenty five hundred families are considered to be extremely rent burdened. They pay over forty percent of their income towards. Towards rent and twenty two percent of that of that of that thirty one percent, I'll apologize, thirty one percent are essentially paying over fifty percent of their rent towards their income towards rent. So it's a it's a real problem in in some areas of of Campbell. And it's only going to get worse because what we're seeing is rents are continuing to grow and that's been a a real problem and and you know, and and so from that perspective. We think this is going to be an opportunity here to provide a solution. So our opportunity here is. We we work with property owners and in this case, there's only a few. Properties in Campbell of a certain size that makes sense to work in this program. Currently, we currently have the Park at Prune Yard in contract purchase for the program. We've been working with the seller. You may be familiar with that property. It's at two twenty five Union Avenue. And it was completely redone over the last two years. They actually stripped it down to the studs. They've rebuilt it. It's a brand like a class A brand new asset, which has been, which is beautiful for the community. And the objective here is to take two hundred and fifty two units. And to. Let me apologize here.
No, that's five minutes. If you can finish, just go through and finish up quickly, if you would. It says that five minutes. That was five minutes.
Okay, so I have how much time?
Well, that's really five minutes, but if you can finish.
You better wrap it up.
Wrap it up if you would.
All right. So the upshot of it is is that we're looking to get to the point of where by immediately, if we go ahead with the program, we're going to find that there's going to be. An immediate savings of about twenty four hundred dollars a year per tenant in the in the community, which is about one month of rent for some folks. The city doesn't have any charge, no liability, no costs associated with it. Over the time, the city actually doesn't doesn't really acquire the property. They actually can force a sale of the property between years fifteen and thirty five of the bond, your term. And you get all the proceeds. So you get all the net proceeds to the city in that regard. I'm going to go forward here and play a little video with you here if I could, and hopefully this will play. I just have to push that. This won't take long here. How do I get the sound up here? Here, right? Can you hear it?
Sorry to hear, but I I think we the idea is going to be the benefit to individuals. Is that? I think the idea is going to be the benefit to renters and. It's a few minutes, so I think we're not going to have a lot of time, but I think I think the idea is the benefit to renter to renters, right?
That's correct. Just one second.
Yeah.
One second. I can fix this here. And one more slide. Yeah, we can actually don't show this last slide. It's fine. I could just speak to it.
I was gonna say, we understand the benefit to the renters. So if we can.
So what we'd like to do, we'd like to ask you of this from you tonight is for you to consider. Having staff take a look at this in some detail, coming back whenever it's reasonable for staff. We realize that we're under the gun with the seller to help get the project closed, but in that regard, we're also willing to work, obviously with you. We want to work with you and with staff to make sure that we have the ability to get this analyzed properly and come back in a public forum, a public meeting as. Councilwoman Givens has requested and come back for a real good consideration of this opportunity with you. So thank you very much. I really appreciate your help.
Thank you. So let's let's. Is there anybody in the public that's here that wants to speak on this item and? Turn it online, we have. So we'll bring it back. Let's bring it back to council. I know we're running out of time. Let me just start here. Councilwoman Landry, if you'd start, and then we'll go down the down the way.
As I stated earlier, I'm very confused about this program. It's not clear to me how the money is made, what what the. How is the developer really being able to do this financially? I I don't understand this whole structure. Like I said, what is the benefit to us as a city? What is the benefit to the homeowner or the renter? And what is the benefit to the person who's doing this financing? And I just, it's to me very complex and I really need more background information to make any kind of assessment of how to move forward.
So so two things. One is I do want to address the upfront process issue because it was it's a very important one. We did try try and accommodate two things, and I want us to get our policies and programs evaluated. But at the same time, we knew Bradley and his group were trying to move forward. So I try to consider this just an informational item about it. There's no action tonight, no action tonight before the council on this item. The question is if there is council interest in this program, we would come back in May. It'd be a notice meeting. There's a specific property. We'd have to look at noticing around that property and that would be a real action. And so I do want to just speak to process. I know. Informing the council coming in and on how we presented is new and that's on me, apologies to me. But we did want to just have the opportunity, given the third timeframe is a bit shorter, to infuse into the informational presentations this item. So again, if there is council interest, consider a future agendized item that notices this will be. Will you really consider this in more depth and take action? And again, staff can come back with more research for that. To answer your question, Councilwoman Landry, I'm not sure if Steve wants to bring up the the pros and cons. There is some information on how these are financed. It has a lot to do with property tax abatements and tax exempt bonds, but I'll hand it over to Stephen.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to get into that right now. I'm just. It's kind of caught me off guard. And I know it's nine o'clock already, so, but thank you.
Councilmember Givens.
So I was from the staff report, I wasn't clear. The state has this program. Are we, is the city obliged to participate in this program? That wasn't clear in the staff report. So we are not. So we the issue is, go ahead, please.
Yeah, the city is not a, yeah, we're not obliged to participate. It's fully discretionary to the city and even entering into the first agreement doesn't necessarily obligate you to the second.
Okay, so that helps me a lot because in the context of discussion this evening, we were going to be talking about it as a tool in the kit. Of options to obtain certain types of housing, but we don't know enough about all the ins and outs of it. I was part of an earlier conversation, so I'm aware of a bit of it, but it is complex and there is. It's an interesting program to consider, but there are challenges about it. So council, I would encourage, needs to know more. About it so that we can make a decision on whether we want wanted in our toolkit or not.
Vice Mayor Riley.
I would concur with that. I I obviously need more information and a better understanding of it. I also. Question, we 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 just went through. An analysis of objectives and and priorities and policies for our for our housing objectives, but we haven't come to a conclusion on that. And so. It seems like we're putting, we're making a decision on on this type of housing when we haven't really confirmed that that's part of our our priority. So. I I'm just a little confused and and if it's if staff feels that it's worth having an agendized item to to bring back, then then to me, that's the proper way to to be discussing it and and making a decision.
Thank you. So I I don't think we know enough. I think that. I think it I agree with the last comment, which is if bring it forward, I'd like to find out more information. And I think the idea today was was to just introduce it so we could make that call, but I think you could have probably brought it back on an agenda anyway, if you felt so. And that wouldn't have this this angst or so. I I'll say this, if if we're revenue neutral at a minimum, which we are. If it meets that special needs or moderate housing, which we want, then I'm interested in finding out more, and it seems to be consistent with what we did earlier in reaching that goal. But there's a lot we don't know about the fifteen thirty five year sale and the assets and stuff like that, but I'd be supportive of bringing it back to an agenda item, but with a full staff report. And and more analysis because we just don't know enough. It seems to meet what we wanted to do in the first two and a half hours, but we don't know how to how to do that. So. If the answer is putting it on an agenda item, I'm supportive of that. We can shoot down here and see if that's the case or not.
My concern, and I understand the need right now that there's a project on the table, but. We just spend a whole lot of time with a lot of high priority items. we just spend a whole lot of time with a lot of high priority items. You guys are working on the general plan. You're you're kind of getting maxed out, I think. And to try to come back in three weeks, two weeks, you know, you got to have your memo in ahead of time. I'm I'm concerned that making a May date is um kind of counterproductive to what other uh high priorities that we have going on. But I do understand the uh you know, we have this opportunity. Um so if you want to bring it back, I just put it into all this, all our other high priority categories.
Councilmember Givens? No comment? Vice Mayor?
I I would concur with that. I think I would move it up to staff to determine whether or not they
That's fair.
bandwidth to to bring it back to us.
Message delivered. So well, it is staff's recommendation is it's a it is a medium priority item. I I I don't think it's the highest on our list. Um we have a lot we're working on. Uh we'll work with the applicant the best we can, but I think our our priorities are on the general plan, housing and the other priorities. That's that's our recommendation.
Fair enough. Okay. And we can, we'll close this out. We can bring back Councilmember Lopez now, if he'd like to, and then we'll close it out. Thank you. Welcome back, Councilmember Lopez. So as far as the general topic here today, you got the input you wanted.
Yeah, to 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 put a nice ice bow on the end. Two and a half hours, a very constructive feedback discussion. So what what we will do is um we're coming back to you in May uh based on your feedback on the priorities, we'll reprioritize those. We're going to provide you more information on those, like specifically what the work plan would focus on. Perhaps like a Gantt chart in the timeframe to expect like exact expectations, a discussion of resources and then probably start a discussion on metrics, what we're trying to achieve by each program. But we're going to sharpen down the programs based on your feedback. And that'll come back to you on your May ninth meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you have a final comment or?
Yes, if I may.
Quickly?
I promise, sort of. Uh so one is, I did want to say thank you um to staff. I think we've all expressed our appreciation. Uh the process here has been very frustrating for me because of its compactness. But I think staff has worked with the consultant um very professionally to provide us with a structure and information that has been comprehensible. Um and challenging, but doable from um having the information in front of us in advance. So I really value that very much. And yes, you can. What I would like to to um ask is that when we first started the housing element process, council had, I believe, a consensus on the three points that the purpose of the housing element was to provide housing, to provide affordable housing, to support Campbell for the community that it is. And I would just offer that to provide an expedited toolkit and process. I would love to see an umbrella thought or an expression that refers back to Campbell. I appreciate that these need to be strategic and and surgical. But I would also encourage that everyone have in the back of their mindset that we're working to build the future of Campbell. Knowing that we're going to have to change. I think the attitude here of everyone is, we get it. We just don't want to lose sight of what we want on the other side of it. So I would just encourage that conversation.
Thank you. Comments? Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, um Rob, since you've been on board, the presentation of information has been uh fed to us and bites and pieces, and it's extremely helpful. Sometimes we have two and a half hour meetings. We don't get to ask a question till the end. So I do appreciate the well, the way these things are organized. And Stephen, you're a big part of that, but um I do appreciate all the amount of time that staff has put into this. And I know up here we can get very critical and sometimes even naysayers, but you know, what you guys do is greatly appreciated. And I'd like to emphasize um what Liz was saying about this is Campbell. And put this umbrella over this, how is Campbell, what what is this going to do to Campbell in twenty years from now, eighteen years, twenty-five years, whatever? And um folk kind of hone back into us as Campbell and how we can maintain our small town charm. I like to say we're the darling of Silicon Valley and I want us to keep that. Thank you.
Thank you. Final comment?
Uh I'll just reiterate my thanks to staff, some other lay appreciation for all the hard work.
Okay, and I'll say the same thank you to staff. So we're going to adjourn this special meeting. The next regularly scheduled council meeting is Tuesday, May third, two thousand and twenty-two. But we do have a budget study session meeting for Monday, April twenty-fifth. It'll be at six P M in this chamber. Thank you.